Well, good morning. Called to order is part two of the hearing on the Committee of Agriculture concerning USDA. The organization program administration will come to order. Ask Trent to offer a quick opening prayer. Trent?
Bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just ask that you bless this great nation, that you continue to bless our farms and our farmers. We ask that you continue to bless us with rich resources and water. Dear Lord, we just ask that you bless all of us in government to help us carry out your will. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Well, good morning. Let's see. Chair would remind members that they'll be recognized for questioning in order of seniority. For members here at the start of the hearing, after that, members will be recognized in order of seniority. I think everybody was here in order. So witnesses are reminded to limit their oral comments to five minutes. All written statements, of course, will be included in the record. And over the course of today's hearing, following testimony of each witness, everyone at the table will be available for answers for questions. After each panel, we'll have about a 10-minute break. We'll see how this goes. If members want to come visit with you, we've got 1302. If you guys slip over there real quick and we can come say hi, then we'll get the other panel in, and that way that'll work. First panel this morning, welcome, the Honorable Robert Bonney, Under-Secretary of Natural Resources and Environment with USDA. He's accompanied this morning by Ms. Mary Wagner, who's the Associate Chief of the Forest Service, and Mr. Jason Weller, who's Chief Natural Resources Conservation Service. Mr. Bonney, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the committee, I want to thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today to discuss the work of the Natural Resources Conservation Service and the Forest Service. I'll focus much of my remarks on implementation of the 2014 Farm Bill, and in addition, I'll address the impacts of wildland fire on the Forest Service budget. NRCS is demonstrating that voluntary conservation backed by strong science and done in concert with a variety of partners can solve critical natural resource challenges for America's farmers, ranchers, and forest landowners. I reported to this committee last September that the agency has completed interim final rules through the Environmental Quality Incentives Program, the Conservation Stewardship Program, and the new Agricultural Conservation Easement Program. This past week, we published the final rule on CSP, and EQUIP and ASAP are nearing final stages of review, and will be published this spring. The new Regional Conservation Partnership Program continues to be extremely popular. In February, Secretary Vilsack announced that USDA and partners across the nation together will direct up to $720 million towards 84 conservation projects that will help communities improve water quality, combat drought, enhance soil health, support wildlife habitat, and protect agricultural viability. And the request for proposals for the third round of RCPP, set to be awarded at the end of 2016, was just announced last week. Beyond this program, NRCS is spearheading a series of initiatives to address drought, water quality, wildlife habitat, and other issues. NRCS is demonstrating through its Working Lands for Wildlife Program that farmers, ranchers, and forest landowners can voluntarily restore habitat for rare wildlife, so species no longer need the Protection of the Endangered Species Act. Just last week, the Department of Interior delisted the Louisiana Black Bear, which was possible in no small part thanks to the significant engagement of NRCS with private landowners through the Wetland Reserve Program. Let me now turn to the Forest Service. Increasing the pace and scale of forest restoration and management across the national forests remains a top priority for the agency. The agency continues to invest in collaborative landscape-scale projects and has increased acres treated over the last several years. Timber sales have increased by 20% since 2008. The Forest Service has successfully implemented all the relevant provisions of the 2014 Farm Bill. I reported last fall that 20 projects were moving forward under the new insect and disease provisions of the Farm Bill. Currently, 34 projects are now moving forward, with 28 of those using categorical exclusions under NEPA. The Forest Service now has good neighbor authority agreements with nine states, up from the three I reported last fall, and we have more agreements on the way. The biggest obstacle to increasing forest restoration and management is the wildfire budget. Last year was a very difficult year, with more than 10 million acres impacted, many lives lost, including 13 firefighters, and hundreds of homes burned. The agency was forced to transfer $700 million from non-fire programs to cover suppression costs. The Forest Service spent more than 60% of its budget on fire-related activities last year, up from 16% two decades ago. Longer fire seasons, increased fuel loads, and development into our wildlands are all significantly increasing the cost of firefighting. All agency activities are suffering, including recreation, research, range management, and yes, forest management. The current budget system, which requires us to shift additional resources to fire every year, is cannibalizing the very programs that can help us reduce the threat of catastrophic wildfire. Many of you are keenly aware of the fire budget challenge, and I appreciate the hard work that you've invested on this issue. It was disappointing to be so close to a comprehensive fix last year and not see it realized. We will continue to push hard for a comprehensive fix. The urgency to solve this problem has not lessened. The trends are not good. Forest Service scientists expect catastrophic fire to get worse. A comprehensive fire fix, one that stops fire transfers and provides the additional capacity the agency needs to increase forest management, will, over the long term, save lives, property, natural resources, and taxpayer dollars. Thank you very much.
Senator Bonney, thank you very much this morning. Appreciate it. Good concerns all. Thanks, all three of you, for being here this morning. Given the members here, we may have more than one round of questions, so I recognize myself for five minutes. Chief Weller, I'm getting concerns back home. Everything's local, as we say. We've got folks that are complaining that on certain EQUIP contracts, that the ranchers are being required as a part of that to take up certain grazing practices. They are not vetted through the local decision-making process. So they're telling me that it's a top-down decision, that they no longer have any kind of real say in what's going on with respect to that. As a result, a number of contracts are down because they don't want to marry up those grazing practices with what they're trying to get done. Can you talk to us about what's changed with respect to your decision-making processes at the agency?
So, our decision-making processes have not changed, and we really value the local approach. And so I had a chance to visit with a state conservationist, Sal Salinas, yesterday about this issue. And what he has then shared with me is he makes it a requirement that at a minimum, every field office has at least one local work group meeting a year. Most field offices have several, what we call, local work group meetings, where it's a chance to meet with local district staff, local farm groups, individual farmers themselves, and really understand what their priorities are for that local area, that field office, which in turn then informs how that field office in that area of Texas is then going to prioritize assistance, whether it's for forestry, for grazing, for water quality, water quantity issues. With respect to the specific concerns on grazing, this is more, I think, about a bigger-picture approach that NRCS is trying to take, and it's really trying to offer producers, both ranchers and farmers, a systems approach to conservation. And so my understanding, in this specific case, the concerns are, a producer may sign up for what we call a facilitating practice, like brush management, prescribed fire, fencing, pasture replanting. And what we're offering then is, and it's not mandatory, but we're offering as part then is a suite of assistance that then, including doing a planting or brush management, you then have to offer the incentive to do proper management of that range or pasture area. So we would offer then a prescribed grazing plan, which would be then, if the taxpayers are paying money to put in new vegetation, let's help the producer then better manage that, so that you're not going to get the weeds, the brush coming back in.
So the grazing practice is not mandatory, it's voluntary?
It's voluntary. Yes, sir.
And why do our guys think it's mandatory?
We'll have to follow up with Sal and his team to understand, to maybe help clarify this is not a mandatory requirement.
Okay, because they think it's either or. You either take the top-down suite of offers. So I appreciate that.
Okay.
Also, while I've got you on the hook, again, everything's local. The allocation for EQUIP for Texas has generally been in the range of $75 to $90 million. This year it's $66. Can you talk to us about where the money went, and what was the decision there?
So, yes. So I think over the last several years, the average, as you pointed out, has been about $78, $79 million. It's fluctuated a little around that, but the average is around $78, $79 million. So the initial allocation to Texas for EQUIP financial assistance is $66 million. But this is just the initial allocation. So what those other averages is the final allocation, what Texas ended up with at the end of the year. So over the course of the year, what we do is we allocate money, and then we are constantly reallocating within between states. So as demand fluctuates between states, so there could be severe drought, we would then reallocate from other regions of the country where they don't have as much demand or need for EQUIP. So for example, we're going to be allocating to Texas, well, we already have an advisory allocation to Texas, an additional $6 million. So right now, they're going to now have $72 million. I suspect by the end of the year, they're going to be well above their average.
Okay. So what these guys were looking at was the average against the overall, what happened the whole year versus what started the year, looking at that.
So they're comparing final versus the initial.
I got that. Thank you. Mr. Bonney, on the issue with respect to DUNES numbers and SAM database, a lot of dust up there. We've got folks that are getting pretty staggering bills. Can you talk to us, is that getting fixed? Are the producers being protected from errors or missions that they really were at fault on?
The chief can talk to us as well, but we've put a lot of NRCS staff to work through this. You know, this problem came to light, I think, last summer.
Right.
And we've put additional staff to try and work through as quickly as we can. And so we're, you can imagine, paying very close attention to this.
Okay. So at the end of the day, though, is there a way to improve this deal where we don't have this happen again inadvertently? Is there some way to improve both those systems? Do we need them both because of the DUNES and Bradstreet number, your internal database number?
I might turn to the chief on this one.
Okay, chief, what you got?
So, we are taking this very seriously, and I'm personally concerned because it's honestly hurting the brand of NRCS.
Right, right.
Very concerning. What this is, is a requirement that's put in place, it was the Federal Financial Management Transparency and Accountability Act of 2006.
Right, right, right.
Requires a producer, an entity. So if someone files their taxes as an entity, they must get both a DUNES number and a System for Award Management number, a SAM number. The DUNES number is a once-and-done. You get your DUNES, you don't have to re-register again. The SAMs, the way the GSA has set this up, is they have to renew annually. So what happened is some folks get their DUNES, they don't get their SAM, or they don't realize they have to re-up every year. So we are required to have entities provide these numbers. This is for all entities dealing with the government. So we did a review. We found a lot of producers, there was a hitch where they either didn't get their SAM or it had expired. So it's officially, under federal accounting rules, it's an improper payment. So working really hard, we're not going to go after the money. I'm using my equitable relief authorities this committee provides me. I've already waived over 5,000 cases that have been brought to me.
Okay.
So you can rest assured, we're taking it really seriously. Dedicating staff, as the Under-Secretary said, we're going to fix this. Going forward, we're going to try and figure out a way this is less onerous for producers.
Okay.
But at the end of the day, it's still a federal requirement that producers have to register these numbers.
Yeah, yeah. None of us want improper payments, and if there's a way to get at that. But so if there's something you need legislatively to smooth this out, still get what we all want, and that is nobody getting the money they shouldn't get. So.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for the aggressive attitude on using the equitable relief. Mr. Lucas, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, I suspect you might have a clue as to what I'd like to discuss. I know my colleague, the ranking member, Mr. Peterson, brought this issue up discussing the watershed funding programs in this year's budget proposal, and I think I'd like to echo his sentiments from your prior appearance before the committee. The watershed programs are important, and I, like Colin, was very disappointed to see the suggested funding nature in the president's budget for these programs. Could you comment on that one more time, please?
There's no smaller, bigger, whatever the saying is, supporter for this program, sir, than NRCS and myself. As you know, I also was really proud, in part, to recognize your leadership with the Watershed Rehabilitation Program in Oklahoma. And yes, the 566 program has been historically an excellent program, has delivered huge results for both rural and urban America across the country. So yes, in 2016 budget, the president did request $200 million for the 566 program. In the end, as part of the administration's budget formulation, ultimately a 2017 budget, I wasn't part of those final decisions, but my understanding is really the administration took a look, and in the 16 budget, they asked for $200 million. In the end, Congress did not provide any funding. But it did, as part of the president's budget chimp or cut mandatory funding for conservation programs that this committee authorizes, out of the 16 budget. In the 17 budget, I think there's a decision where to put those resources. In the end, they did not request money for 566, but historically, this is, or I should say historic, the president did not request a dollar of cuts from any of the Title II conservation programs in the Farm Bill, which is a really big deal. So I think it was ultimately from a budgeting standpoint, is where is that marginal dollar better invested? And in this case, because of all the priorities for NRCS, USDA, and the administration, that marginal dollar was better invested in the Title II programs.
But we would agree, both you and I, from our experiences, PL566 is an important long-term investment in preserving the resources of this country, and ultimately, whether it's future efforts of the administration or future efforts in the budget process here, we have to get back on track and continue to make those investments. Sticking with that point, I hear lots of good things about the new Regional Conservation Partnership Program. It was in the House, passed conservation title, about how it's being implemented and all that. One of the programs allowed, of course, as a part of that, it authorizes the use of some of these resources in PL566. So tell me, in the 2016 round of RCP projects, only two projects were funded that used these authorities. And my concern is that this innovative approach is not being fully utilized, and the potential there is not being realized. And let's visit for a moment about, is the application process too complicated for small communities? Do the folks who would potentially use this not understand the program? Is there something going on at USDA? Expand for me, if you would, and if there's something that needs to be corrected, let's talk about that for future legislative corrections.
Well, thank you for the recognition for RCP. I'm personally really excited about it, and I think ultimately, it's achieving the vision of this committee's leadership on it. It's brought in thousands of new partners across the country into the conservation arena and the conservation mission. And so we have awarded now funds of up to 199 projects. We ourselves at NRCS, we've put in $590 million, but that in turn has leveraged over $900 million in non-federal contributions, which is just monumental. On 566 specifically, I think it's important to not just look individually, but look across multiple years and see what's going on. In the first round, we did fund multiple 566 projects. So if you look at the whole suite of 566 projects that are now authorized, whether in the Gunnison River, in Oregon, in Washington State, in Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, in Missouri, in Arkansas, we have examples of 566 projects that have been successful. It's a very competitive program. So for every dollar that NRCS had to invest, we had demand for seven. So it's a highly competitive program. So at NRCS, though, it's not sufficient for us to sit back and wait to see what comes in, I expect. And the strong expectation I have for our state leaders is to reach out to their local partners and really offer almost mentoring or opportunity to sit down and really talk about how RCP can better fit in their state or in their region, and that includes 566. I agree with you, this is a huge opportunity to show the power and the value of that 566 program across the country, and how if you take a watershed approach, you can address water management issues, whether it's flood, too little water, too much water, water quality, municipal water supply, ag water supply. It's a very flexible program, very powerful, and believe me, I want to see it be successful and work. So we're going to be sitting down with partners to help provide training, outreach, lessons learned from successful applicants, but also for those folks who are not successful, sit down with them, talk about their applications, and how they can beef them up and be more competitive in round three.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're back.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks to all the folks on the panel there. It's good to see everybody. I appreciate your work, appreciate your leadership. Yesterday, I had, at the end of one of my meetings, at the end of the day, was really about a number of things, but voluntary conservation, which I think we all take a lot of pride in with the success we've had. I had folks, somebody from Trout Unlimited and somebody there, one of the district managers from our conservation districts, and Erica Tomlinson, who was a district manager up in Tioga County, Pennsylvania, was talking about how she was taking, regularly takes school kids out to these streams to show them, you know, what the need is. And they have a particular place they like to go to because, quite frankly, nothing lives there. And so she was talking about how the last time, her agenda blew up, because when the kids showed up, they came back to her and said, "What do you mean, nothing lives in there? Because there's all kinds of bugs and aquatic life." And so the kids discovered the outcome before we did. But it was a result of voluntary conservation. And I have to say that I don't think Emily was disappointed. She was thrilled, actually. But, you know, our voluntary conservation programs, there are some out there that like to attack those. The EPA attacks voluntary conservation, you know, whether, you know, claims that they're not effective. Some extreme environmental groups appear to increasingly esceptical of the ability of voluntary conservation programs to help meet nutrient and sediment reduction goals. And I believe we need to continue programs which provide farmers with resources they need, obviously, to work with their states on water quality problems and natural resource concerns. And as the president, budget was very supportive of USDA voluntary conservation programs. I just, kind of a confirmation, I guess, do you agree that voluntary programs are an important and an effective way to help reduce nutrient and sediment runoff?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I couldn't agree more. Wanted to, actually, ask a question on behalf of my ranking member of the subcommittee, who is hoping to be here, and maybe she still will be, but she wanted to make sure this question got asked, and I support her question as well. And this is the Under-Secretary Bonney and Associate Chief Wagner. There's a lot of talk about building off of the Farm Bill insect and disease categorical exclusions. Where does the implementation of those stand? And can you tell us how many acres have been proposed for CE, and how many acres have been granted CE to this point?
So I can tell you the number of projects. It's, I think, 34 projects. I said in my statement, and I want to say 26, use CE's. I can't give you the acreage, but I'm happy to follow up and give you the acreage. And there is a lot more interest in using those CE's moving forward. I think, as I told you last September, our expectation is it will continue to ramp up over time.
Yeah. Thank you. Chief Weller, good to see you again. Thank you so much for the hearing we did a couple weeks ago. You did a great job. Appreciate your passion and your professionalism and the role you're in. I want to ask about easements quickly. As NRCS develops the final rule for the Agricultural Conservation Easement Program for agricultural land easements, the ALE program, what is NRCS doing to ensure that well-established state programs for farmland protection are able to be certified under the federal program? Of course, in Pennsylvania, we take that pretty serious. They're number-one industry. It's a treasure. Pennsylvania's got a long history for farmland protection, actually longer than the federal program, but unfortunately, it was not certified last year because of some onerous requirements established from NRCS.
So the ASAP generally, the Ag Conservation Easement Program, generally, very popular. The ag land easement component is even more popular. So for every dollar that NRCS had, there was $4 demanded. So competitively, nationally, we're only able to get about to a quarter of those projects that were submitted to us. But to your point, we can also do better. And rest assured, I really take seriously, and particularly Pennsylvania, a lot of the northeastern states, they have long storied histories and very successful programs, either state programs or land trusts. We have been meeting with both Departments of Agriculture and other state agencies that have land trust responsibilities in their states, but also with land trusts themselves, and really trying to understand what their concerns are. In the end, there are some requirements that we have, that we just have to ensure the integrity of the program, but I still think there's a way to ensure integrity but still allow for flexibility. So in the case of Pennsylvania, our staff, both the state staff and our national staff, we had our national team go up to Pennsylvania and really sit down with the state agency, and to just figure out how to make the program work in the state of Pennsylvania, to make Pennsylvania comfortable and feel assured that this program will work, but then also to ensure, at the end of the day, we can ensure the integrity of the program, meet the purposes that this committee requires. So we negotiated with the state of Pennsylvania, the D-terms, that was, I think, the hitch, the hang-up. In the end, we got to a good place, and this includes allowing for energy development, appropriate mineral rights recognition for Pennsylvania, which is also very important, but still allow for protection of the lands and the farm viability aspects of the program. So nationally, we would like to be this streamlined. So we offer as a template. So if land trusts or partners come in and they're willing to use the template, they have a very quick path to go, and they don't need any more work with us. They just take the template, the D-terms, and they can run with it. If those national template D-terms don't work for them, we absolutely will sit down and work with the partners to make sure we can get D-terms that work for that state entity or that local land trust partner, but that, they have to recognize, will take a little more time, because we only have so much bandwidth. But we're committed to making the program work for all partners.
All right, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank all the witnesses for being here. Under-Secretary Bonney, on endangered species, how does NRCS and the Forest Service work with Fish and Wildlife Services to prevent species from being listed as either threatened or endangered? And then how does the agencies also work with FWS once a species is listed?
So we are in constant contact with Fish and Wildlife Service, both at the local level, but also our leadership teams are talking. On the private land side, NRCS is doing a lot of proactive work through Working Lands for Wildlife to work to keep species off the list in many cases. Sage grouse is a good example of that. There are other examples of that as well. I mentioned the Louisiana black bear coming off the list. Wetlands Reserve Program and the support from this committee deserve a lot of recognition for that. But there are other species that similarly have come off the list or we've kept off the list, the New England cotton tail, the fluvial arctic grayling in Montana. So there are a bunch of good stories there, and I think Fish and Wildlife Service has recognized that NRCS is a real resource on this. One of the things we need to do in addition to per- One of the things we need to do in addition to providing financial incentives is to provide regulatory assurances that if landowners do right by the species, that they will have certainty that they will continue to be able to farm and ranch and/or practice forestry. So that's one of the pieces that's really, really important. On the Forest Service side, it involves our planning, our forest planning, to ensure that we take care of species so we can keep them off the list. And then obviously, taking steps to take care of species if they are on the list. You know, there are places where we have challenges like catastrophic wildfire, where we've got to be able to manage in order not only to be able to reduce the threat of fire, but also ultimately to be able to take care of those species as well. And there, we really have to work with the Fish and Wildlife Service closely to ensure we can do both those things.
Thank you. And I think this is to Ms. Wagner. Clearly, the Forest Service and state forestry agencies do not directly implement the Farm Bill's conservation programs, but you do play an important role in providing basic landowner education, outreach, and technical assistance to help landowners implement conservation practices. In your opinion, where are there areas for improvement and where can NRCS work better with the Forest Service and state forestry agencies to implement these programs, especially in light of the fact that forestry is still only a small component of many of the conservation programs?
Thank you for the question. The chiefs of the NRCS and the Forest Service have, for the last three years, been investing in something called the Joint Chiefs Projects, where private landowners and national forests are collaborating across boundaries and developing projects and implementing projects that protect water quality, reduce fire risk, improve wildlife habitat. So that's one way that we're working together. Also, through the Farm Bill, we have the Good Neighbor Authority, where we're working closely with states. Robert mentioned the number of agreements that we have on deck and more pending. And that's giving us the ability to not only do work on national forests, but have our state partners who have expertise and skills to be able to deliver more work on national forests as well through agreements.
And then finally, I just have a comment. Undersecretary Bonney, going back to the voluntary conservation, I also think that's very important, that we have the voluntary conservation. I think it works, and I think we need to work together and let us know how we can help to keep EPA and some of these groups from preventing us from doing the things right. Because I've found in life, when we do things voluntarily because we want to and it makes us better, we all wind up with a better product than when we're forced to do something, especially if what we're forced to do doesn't make sense. So thank you for your help in this matter.
Well, thank you. Thank to this committee. You all have provided resources and direction that's been incredibly important. You know, there's a wealth, there's a conservation ethic in this country amongst landowners that is very, very strong. And the Farm Bill programs allow us to take advantage of that. And we've made enormous progress in wildlife. I think of the delisting of streams in places like Oklahoma, where voluntary conservation has improved water quality to an extent where we can take those streams off the 303D list under the Clean Water Act. So there are a lot of examples out there. Part of our job is to talk about that, to show those examples, and to show where endangered species have come back or we've kept species on the list. And so we're going to continue to call those examples out and would look for opportunities with all of you to do that.
And Mr. Chairman, I yield back. Chairman yields back. Dr. Benetek, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks to all of you for coming here this morning. Chief Wagner and Undersecretary Bonney, thanks for your efforts after the last hearing. We've done a good, you've done a good job following up on some of the questions that I had about timber contracts in the district, and I appreciate that. I'm, still want to talk about some of these issues. In my district, the Forest Service usually comes down to two issues, you know, harvesting the forest and access to the forest for multiple use. And I think we've made some good progress on the, in Michigan with the Good Neighbor Authority. You know, I was able to talk to the state forester, and I know they're going to be starting to do some cutting under that authority this summer in the Ottawa. And hopefully, maybe give me your side of that. He had nothing but good things to say about it. And I also want to talk about this accessing road issue. You know, we spent a lot of time with several constituents about access to the forest on certain roads. And I think we've had some progress in that regard, but we've had to spend quite a bit of time doing it in my office, myself, my staff. So I want to talk a little about the, about the process of interaction with the local community a little bit. How can we change the process so that local input is a regular part of the forest management? And what are the policies that the Forest Service does to encourage that? I mean, do you have local government weigh in on when you change the travel plan? Do you require public meetings? I was hoping that you'd touch on those two, those two things that I just mentioned. Go ahead, whoever wants to.
I'll start and then hand it to Mary. We've tried to build in collaboration with local groups, both governments, stakeholders, conservation groups, industry groups, others, into everything we do, whether it's putting together forest projects, forest plans, or travel management. And so that is, that's a key effort of what we do. As you know, there are a lot of issues on national forests that have been polarizing for a long time. But I would say, I think we're making great progress, particularly on the forest management and restoration side and having forest industry and environmentalists and others work together. And as you point out, there are similar challenges on the access side, and we continue to promote collaborative effort. I think Mary can probably get into a little bit more detail, particularly on the travel management side.
Go ahead, Chief Wagner.
Thank you. The management of transportation on national forests is of keen interest to constituents. It's of keen interest to the Forest Service because we think public access is absolutely vital to hunting, to fishing, to recreating, for the uses and production of minerals and energy and forest products and forage. So access is a really important issue. We have provisions that have required us to identify a system of designated roads, trails, and areas for motor vehicle access. And over 93% of all national forests have completed that. In addition, we have a provision that requires us to look at the minimum transportation system necessary. We have a lot of roads. We want to maintain access for all of those reasons that I talked to, but we also want to minimize the number of roads that we have to be right-sized with the investment and our ability to maintain those. So local decision-making, local involvement in that decision-making is absolutely vital. So you offered, are things like public meetings, public notice, engaging in citizens and having them look at maps with us, that's absolutely expected.
Well, I know, but sometimes it seems, people complain to me that, you know, they go somewhere and the road is closed and that if this is the first time they heard of it, you know what I mean? So I'm just wondering as to what degree that actually occurs. I mean, do you go have a hearing before every, any road is changed? Or, you know, what is the actual practice? And how can it be improved, frankly?
It's not our intention to ever surprise somebody by having them expect to have access. We produce a map on an annual basis that shows the roads, trails, and areas that are open for public use. There are times when occasionally we'll have an emergency situation, perhaps a road culvert was washed out and a road will be closed. But those always come with provisions to notify the public, and those always come, if we have a need to close a road, we always expect a public involvement process, transparent decision-making, participation by citizens in that. So I'll take your comments and share those back with the regional forester so she can talk with the forest supervisors. Our expectation would be to do it just as you're saying.
Oh, that five minutes sure goes fast. Thank you.
It does. Thanks, Dan. Ms. Lujan Grisham, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Undersecretary Bonney, I know that you are well aware, and so is the whole committee, that Congress unfortunately is a bit gridlocked on the Forest Service wildfire budget situation. And last year's fire season, frankly, as expected, one of the worst in recent memory. And it's caused, again, disruption in the fire services, Forest Services operations. And then regardless of where the fires occur, states and communities all over the country, we feel the pain when there's a transfer from funds from the non-fire programs to support the immediate emergency needs of fire suppression. During the last fire season in the southwest region, which includes New Mexico and Arizona, I understand that we lost more than 15 million to fire borrowing. And as a result, several projects in my state were put on hold that, quite frankly, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, could have then and should be preventing at least the extreme nature of the fires and the fire danger situation that we have in the state. So it's clear to me that under the current funding structure, that you can't really carry out your congressional mandated mission. And we need to fix the wildfire budget first before we can really analyze and discuss what management practices are actually going to work in order to promote healthy and productive forests. I know also that you're supportive of the Wildfire Disaster Funding Act, which many on this committee have signed on to. And I want to thank the administration for continuing to push on that. And I want to thank the chairman and the committee for really working through this issue to the highest degree possible. So given that long scenario and story, which everyone is well aware of, I appreciate your patience with me. Last year, Secretary Vilsack sent a letter to Capitol Hill saying he would not authorize any Forest Service wildfire budget transfers this year. And I know that the wildfire budget is bigger this year, but how did this decision come about? And what happens to the southwest and the west as fire season approaches us and we have a terrible fire, God forbid, and the wildfire budget is exhausted?
So thank you for the question. To the, to the specific question, this was, this was a decision of the secretary. I just, I think you all know, he's frustrated with the current system. Last year, we transferred $700 million out of non-fire programs into, into fire suppression. And I think the secretary and all of us recognize that we need to treat wildfires as the disasters that they are. And so it was his decision and, you know, as I think you alluded to, the budget last year put $600 million additional into the fire suppression account. We hope that we don't have to run to the place where I think you're alluding to. And I think the secretary would say, as would I, that, you know, we've, we've, we came very close last year to solving this problem. This committee did a lot of really good work on it and very much appreciated. There are two problems here we have to solve. One is the one you point out, which is the transfer problem, which is we get in a bad year and we have to transfer non-fire dollars to fire dollars. Those transfers affect everything, but one of the things they affect as well is forest restoration and management, as you point out. The second problem is the long-term problem, which is the creep of the budget increasingly towards fire. I mentioned in my opening remarks, 20, two decades ago, we spent 16% of our budget on fire. If you take fire suppression, preparedness, hazardous fuels, and a few other smaller areas on fire, last year, we spent well north of 60% of our budget on fire. And that's just unsustainable if we're going to do all the things we need to do, forest management, research, access, roads. There are places where we want to keep roads open.
So what can we be doing? What are the key compromises here? What's your advice for this committee? And I appreciate your response. I don't know what the answer is, because if there's a terrible situation, I need to know that the secretary is going to be a bit more flexible and make sure that we're not going to lose lives as a result of USDA deciding, well, not another dollar goes towards fighting a wildfire. That seems ludicrous to me.
So I think in terms of what we can do, we came very close last December. We had a compromise that had forest management provisions in it that this committee helped work on, and we had some compromise on the budget side as well. And, you know, our hope was we can leave off where we, our start where we left off in December and move that compromise forward. I think we're very close. There was broad agreement in the House, and I think we came close in the Senate, and our hope is that we could move this forward, this Congress.
Mr. Chairman, I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Yeho, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate all of you being here when Congress is in recess so that we can continue to do the people's work. You guys, as we go through this hearing today, and what I'd like for you to do is just kind of look at ways we can, you know, become more efficient at everything we do in our departments, because you know the state of the economy. And, you know, right now, there's a discussion going over on the budget. There's a $30 billion difference. It's a big deal. And if we can cut a little bit out of each program and save that money for the budget, it would be awesome. Secretary Bonner, you were talking about the increase in fire budget of 16%. Was that a decade ago or 20 years ago?
Two decades ago.
All right, two decades ago, and now it's 60% of the budget. What's the difference? Why did it go up so much? Is it a lack of fire suppression or the way you're doing it, or more, more national forests owned by the government?
There's no question that past management has had an impact. We've, and I think you last time asked about prescribed fire. We've taken minute, we've taken fire out of these ecosystems for a long time. Fuel loads have built up.
Right.
And we have to go back in and deal with that. There are two other issues, though, that are really important. One is our fire seasons are longer. They're 78 days longer than they used to be, and we're seeing more extremes, and that's causing more catastrophic, extreme fires. The other piece that's important is we've had a lot of development into the wildland urban interface. That makes fighting fires more difficult because instead of being able to sit back and draw a line where we want to, we have to go do point production. That means more people and more assets.
Okay, let me ask you this. What do you need as far as authorization or funding to do more prescribed burnings? That comes from the southeast, and we've got the Longleaf Pines, and, you know, they do controlled burns, I mean, all the time, and they keep the underbrush burned out. And I know out west, it's a little bit different. You've got higher winds and velocities. Can they do more controlled burnings more frequently in smaller areas and maybe make bigger fire zones around those areas? What are your recommendations so we can do that, so we can save the money and not have to transfer?
So that, as you point out, if we invest in this on the front end, we'll spend less money on the back end. And I think, I think one piece is this, this fire funding fix is actually important for us to have the boots on the ground to be able to get fire done. The other thing I'd point to is we're actually having good conversations with EPA right now about ways to square the Clean Air Act to make sure we've got enough burning days to invest in prescribed fire. And that's another piece that I think will be important.
Is that something we need to talk to the EPA and just say, "This is more important than what your mandate may be? This is more serious?" Because if we don't do this, we're going to have a bigger problem.
That's exactly right. We're having, as I said, very good conversations, both at the national level and local level with EPA. The last couple rules they've done have reflected this. I think we're making a lot of progress.
Chief Weller, I have a comment and a question for you. I just want to compliment one of your employees in the Gainesville area, Russell Morgan. He came by and he does a great job in our district. People really love him, actually, all over the state. He's out there and just really promoting what you guys do. With the million of acres moving into conservation easement, at what point do we get to where we move from the private tax revenues supporting local and regional governments and state governments to where we get into a situation where we go into the PILT payment systems like they do in a lot of the western states? The way I understand it, some of those states, 80 to 90% of the land is owned by the federal government, so their tax revenue is down. Is there a formula that you go by, say, like for the state of Florida? We've got real estate all over the state, but about half the state is in forest products or forest or range land. At what point do you get to where you say, "We can't afford to take anymore from this state because if we do, it's going to start costing the federal government more than they bring in in tax, and the government will have to pay that?"
Well, with the easements, they still are taxable. It's just at an adjusted rate that reflects the new rights that landowners still retains. So they're still privately owned lands, to be, just to be really clear. We don't necessarily, as part of our formula, take into account the impacts on the local tax base or on how many, what's the saturation or expansiveness of easements in a given county or area. Ultimately, it's a demand-driven approach, and it's at the request of private landowners and what they want to do with their lands. And so it's a shared investment with that private landowner.
And then I visited South Florida in the Homestead area, and they used to have a lot of cattle grazing on the western part of the state. There was roughly 12,000 acres. And when the Everglades Restoration Product, Project came through there, the cattle, we're told they had to leave, and they tore down the fencing. And now they've got an overgrowth of the kind of grass that grows down there, your Johnson grass, Maiden grass and all that. And now they need to have it mowed, but they can't find anybody to mow it. And they're asking if people would want to run cattle back on there. And my cattle producer says, "If we can fence it, we will." And they were told they couldn't fence it. How do we prevent programs like that? And I'm out of time, and I'll have to get back with you. I'll yield back.
Ms. Rousier, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just a couple of questions, just for my own educational benefit here. One topic I'm very interested in is endangered species. I can't think of really anything that probably affects what you can and can't do more than those species that are, that are listed and how it impacts, whether it's beetre nourishment or dredging of inlets and waterways, or what you can do in California as it relates to the water, et cetera. My question is... My question is, how does NRCS and the Forest Service work with the Fish Wildlife Services to prevent species from being listed as either threatened or endangered?
So, you know, as I noted before, the NRCS has a Working Lands for Wildlife Program where we're working both for species that are listed to try and get them off and species that are potentially headed to the list. One of the things that's important about endangered species is that most of endangered species have most of their habitat on private lands, and these species are declining because they don't have enough habitat. The Endangered Species Act doesn't compel any landowner to restore, and that gets to the notion of the importance of voluntary conservation. If we're going to get those, that habitat back, we've got to incentivize restoration. And so voluntary conservation becomes very, very important. And so that requires providing assistance to landowners so that they can understand how to square endangered species conservation with the things they want to do, agriculture, ranching, forestry. It requires financial assistance, because sometimes those things are expensive. Restoration can cost money, and so we need to help. And then the third thing I'd say, as I alluded to early, is regulatory assurances. Landowners need to do, need to know that if they do right by endangered species, that the Fish and Wildlife Service or state agents or anybody else isn't going to come later and ask them for more. And if you can give them that assurance, landowners have shown across the country that they're willing to step up in a major way. And we can look at examples across the country where we have additional endangered species habitat, or we're keeping species off the list because of the voluntary activities of landowners.
Other question I have for you is deals with litigation. You know, I grew up in the shadow of the Cold War and, as a kid, and I always thought Armageddon was going to be nuclear weapons and missiles, et cetera. I've come to believe it's going to be every individual suing every other individual. Let me, I'm just curious, how has litigation affected the Forest Service's active forest management?
I'll start, and then Mary may follow up. You know, forest management on the national forest system has not been without controversy. We know that. But if you look back 20 or 30 years, I would argue today we're in a much better place than we were. We have examples all over the country where environmentalists, timber industry, local communities are sitting down developing plans to restore forests, both whether it's for catastrophic fire, wildlife, to address a variety of threats. And I would argue that, and I think our numbers prove it up, that the amount of litigation we're seeing is going down. And I think in large part because of the investment and collaboration. We get people to the table. Now, there's still groups out there that are going to litigate, but when you're, when you have industry and a portion of the conservation community and local communities standing together, not only is the litigation risk lower, but we tend to win more. And I would argue, I think we're actually winning more. So it's not to say that there's a silver bullet. My argument would be there's, by investing in collaboration, which you all did as part of the farm bill when you did the insect and disease language, that requires collaboration. That type of approach, I think, over the long term will win.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Ms. Maler, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I also want to thank our witnesses today. And I'm from Michigan's 4th Congressional District, and we've used the Regional Conservation Partnership Program. And in 2015, the NRCS selected the Saginaw Bay Watershed Conservation Partnership for funding. And the project is focused specifically on water quality challenges, including loss of habitat, excessive nutrients, and algae blooms. By 2019, the project aims to treat 55,000 acres with conservation practices through the Environmental Quality Incentives Program and restore 400 acres of wetlands through the Agricultural Conservation Easement Program. And Chief Weller, I know you've spent some time in Michigan, and appreciate you being here. You just announced final projects for the second round of the RCPP. I'm just wondering if you could share with the committee what lessons you've learned from the first and second rounds, and have you seen success with the Saginaw Bay Watershed Conservation Program?
So, we are learning, and the partners are learning too. So if you look at the differences between the first round of the project applications we got versus the second round, the quality, both in terms of the focus and the definition of what they want to achieve, their solutions those partners are going to bring, the expansiveness of the partners, and the contributions the partners are bringing, both cash and in-kind assistance, have all increased significantly. So first round, we had about a one-to-one match for projects that we awarded. We had 115 projects. We were able to fund, they had a one-to-one match. Second round, we were able to fund about, I think, 82 projects, and it was almost a one-to-two match in terms of, for every federal dollar, we're getting $2 of both in-kind cash contributions. So the partners have expanded, and they've been much more, I think, creative in bringing new groups into the, into the fold. We also saw that folks, including in Michigan, the Traverse City area had a project, as an example, but there were projects on the country that were not successful first round. It was very competitive, and there were some folks that were frustrated, but they didn't let up, and they came back. They sat down, in this case, with our state leadership in Michigan, but also with the team here in Washington, DC, and they went after it, and they buffed up their proposals. The proposals came back really strong, and they are now among one of the top-ranked in the country. And so they were successful, like in Michigan, and others around the country where they didn't give up, they came back. So we have third round open. I'm expecting it to be even more competitive, but again, that, the quality increasing, I think the creativity and the expansiveness of the partnerships also increasing. With respect to Saginaw Bay, Mr. Beneshek also, the last hearing we had, I think, highlighted it, and one of the witnesses was from the Saginaw Bay Project and highlighted some of the concerns that the partners have there. As I said at the outset, this is a learning experience, both for partners and for NRCS. It's my expectation that when NRCS enters into this agreement, it's really an agreement, a partnership agreement between our agency and these partners, we sit down as co-equals, and I think there's a learning opportunity in both sides. I want to have partners be able to really prove out their approach. A lot of times, those approaches just flip, slip right in with what NRCS does. Sometimes they're challenging us to look outside our box and think a little bit creatively. And I think my understanding is with the Saginaw Bay, there has been some initial, I'll say, little friction, maybe misunderstandings on both sides. They're working that out. I think they're starting to get work done on the ground. We may have a little work yet to do on our side in that specific project, but ultimately, I expect it to be successful and to really prove out, again, how voluntary approaches for conservation, whether in Saginaw Bay or elsewhere in the Great Lakes region, can show that farmers can not only produce food and fiber, but also can protect water quality.
Okay, thank you. And then, are there any changes that Congress should make to this program?
We're still, I would say, in the learning phase, so at this point, I won't have any technical advice or legislative changes. But I think after three rounds of this, the agency will be able to come back, and if the committee is interested, we'll be able to provide, I think, some technical assistance on tweaks that may or may not be needed within the statute.
The other question I had is, are there any emerging technologies or technologies on the horizon that would help with nutrient recovery, kind of at the individual farm level?
So there's, there's two sides of the nutrient equation. It's being really precise and optimizing what you put on the ground. And so the farmer doesn't want to waste his money and his farm inputs, his fertilizer costs, and he wants to ensure his yield is maxed out. But then also, there's, in the event that there's a rain event, or maybe they over-apply on one part of the field, or they have some soils where there's a lot of leaching potential, whatever the issue may be, you try and capture those nutrients before they leave the farm field, as it leaves the farm field. And so there are new practices, for example, we've put in place things like are called bioreactors, which are essentially underground tanks where you put in wood chips. They've served as a substrate for the microbes. So you can install this, for example, on a tile line. So as the tile water runs through this bioreactor, the microbes on the wood chips actually oxidize and they munch and they eat all the nitrates, and they can remove up to 80% of the nitrates from the water supply. So by the time that water leaves the bioreactor and at the end of the tile line and enters the ditch, that water's a lot cleaner, a lot less phosphorus and nitrogen in the water. There's new practices like that, the NRCS has incorporated, and we're offering producers to offer a broader way of tools they can address water quality.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Lamoff, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you and the panel for being here today. I heard in some comments a few minutes ago about a couple of issues. One, that most endangered species are found on private land. Would you care to reiterate that?
Yeah, so if you look at where endangered species are found across the United States, most of the habitat is on, is on private lands, and it puts a...
Now, with the, have you looked at the map of the western half of the country here, being mostly in federal, federal hands?
Yeah, I mean, there's no question there are endangered species issues in the west and in your district, obviously, as well.
And every time you turn around, they want to make another monument, another wilderness land, another set aside of some type or another that is supposedly going to preserve something from something, and that, yet my people are still hassled to death by the federal government on their lands for 150-year practices of ranching, of trying to maybe convert a open field into an orchard or something like that, and they get six-digit fines upon them, they get their land taken away from them, they get dragged into court, they're under stress. How is that a success, especially if the federal government is supposed to be preserving all this land for us?
Well, I mean, I think from our standpoint, obviously, through the NRCS programs, we're trying to work cooperatively to deal with all types of challenges.
You know how uncooperative it feels to my people up in my district? You know that we had a fire in western Siskiyou County in the fall of 2014, that they're just now out putting bids out, and maybe they can get into the forest on May of 2016 to try and salvage a skinny 4% of the forest? The other 96 will just be left to turn back into snags and grow into brush and become the next tinderbox for the next round of fire, because the government can't manage its land and refuses to do so? How is that a success?
Well, we're both, as I mentioned earlier, putting a very high priority on increasing the amount of work we do before the fire. We've also done a lot of work to move salvage after.
Zero to 4% is not going to get it done, sir.
I would agree with you.
And you talk about having partnerships with the environmental groups that sue all the time. They're still suing away. They're still preventing decent salvage operations from happening. This happens in my backyard. My constituents get to breathe this all summer, every summer, because the Forest Service can't manage its land and refuses to put out the fire. Even our locals try and put out the fire, Cal Fire. We get up to that line there, Forest Service says, oh, no, let it burn. Then when it's time to come back and do the salvage operations, well, we're going to have to litigate. We might get sued. Is this a success?
We're, work closely with Cal Fire. I think I have a good relationship there, and I think I would, on the salvage side, you know, we did a 300 million board foot sale post-rim fire. One of our big problems with salvage is the markets to actually move the material.
Thankfully, we're able to get that done, because it took every bit of resources of Forest Service from the entire state of California, it seems, to go down there and work only on that salvage. Meanwhile, all the green work that needs to be done ongoing during the year was left wanting, because everybody focused just on that. We've been working legislatively, trying to keep Forest Service focused on its green work in the meantime, and getting timber harvest permits out legislatively. Haven't gotten there yet, but this is a giant success for, for doing nothing, because we're still, despite what the water conditions in California are going to be susceptible to drought, we have over 12 million and counting dead trees in California that haven't had any kind of salvage done up around them. They're going to be the next bug infestation, they're going to be the next tinderbox for following years. And I don't see nearly the speed of things needing to happen on our forestry. It's going to not have us be vulnerable for gigantic catastrophic fires every single year until something dramatic is done, and we finally quit saying yes to environmentalists stopping everything. You guys are going to have to start upping your, your budget for litigation, fight back on them, because we're suffering out here in the west.
Well, I'd say, you know, as I said earlier, we're committed to getting more work done, both on the, as you point out, the need to do work in advance and on the green side, but as well on the salvage side. Our biggest challenge right now is capacity, and that's directly linked to the, to the fire budget. And if we solve that, I think our ability to be able to expand the amount of work we've done will increase.
Please emphasize what you mean by capacity.
So we have 39% fewer staff on the non-fire side of the, of the Forest Service than we had in the late 90s, and that's a direct result of the increasing amount of our budget that is taken up by fire.
Well, we'll help to remedy that, but it's frustrating here around here. All we need is more money and more staff, because when we look at that, or we look at the VA, we look at a lot of things around there that don't get better when you give them more money. Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Chairman Yeho's back. The, we've asked the panel to stay till 10:15, and who all wants a second round? We'll parcel up the, so one, two, three, four. Okay, let's take, we'll take three minutes apiece, and we may also, at the end, if we run out of time, read your, read your question in the record and ask for you guys to respond. Then we'll have it, the question in the record, we just won't get the answer until they come back in writing. So Chief Weller, make it three minutes out. Chief Weller, bighorn sheep and grazing rights for domestic sheep. ARS is doing a lot of research on what's the vector between, if there is in fact one, for between bighorn sheep and domestic sheep. Grazing allotments are being trimmed dramatically for domestic sheep under the guise that somehow they're killing off the bighorn sheep, but ARS's science doesn't support that. Can you visit with us quickly about how you guys are using the science from your sister organization to make decisions with respect to grazing sheep in the west?
So we do work closely with our research service and their experts, for example, on range management research, on what's the right management techniques, whether it's stalking rates, different brush management techniques, trying to do ecological site descriptions to enhance our ability to run, whether it's sheep or cattle, in a way that sustains grazing over the long period. But in terms of disease risks between wildlife and domesticated cattle or sheep, that's really outside of our expertise and our bandwidth.
Exactly, and so that's what ARS is for, and they're showing that there's so far no direct link between domestic sheep and respiratory diseases and bighorn sheep. In fact, they've had significant die-offs in the bighorn sheep where there's not even a domestic sheep near them. So can you at least commit to talking more with ARS and looking at the science that they're developing with respect to these issues, when you then, on the other hand, decide on grazing allotments for sheep? Is that, is that an unreasonable? Or if you decide you can't do that, is there, can you begin to present alternatives to these long-held grazing allotments that these sheep guys have had for a long, long time? Give them something that's an alternative to just saying no?
I absolutely will commit to having us work with ARS, but to be clear, we are not responsible for grazing allotments. We only work with producers to put in place conservation systems, whether on their private lands or on the grazing allotments, but we are not involved with managing the permities.
Who is?
That would either be the Forest Service or the Bureau of Land Management.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Yes.
So this is, this is an important issue on the Forest Service side, and are trying to work in a collaborative way to work with sheep producers to identify where there are challenges, but then also look for allotments where we may be able to provide some flexibility in terms of grazing.
All right, but you will commit that ARS...
Absolutely.
...good research, and so you want, I mean, our Steve Gosell, based on science, fine, but if it's just an arbitrary, no, that's...
Absolutely.
Well, let me read one in the record real quick. Our colleague, Kristy Noem, is asked, there's a significant backlog in wetland determinations under the Prairie Pothole region. Can you talk to us about the latest numbers on that backlog, as well as what you're going to do to address the backlog, to get these determinations made quicker? And I'll, Chief Weller, I'll give you a written question that she's asked for her, if you wouldn't mind getting back to that. So who was next? Glee, GT, three minutes.
Thanks, Chairman. First of all, this one's just, just a request of consideration, I don't need a response. For Chief Wagner, if you could take it back to Chief Ted Will. I know that regional foresters looking at creating, whether it's called an assistant forest supervisor or deputy forest supervisor on the Allegheny National Forest, that's greatly appreciated, given the diversity of hardwoods. Here's my request for consideration. Don't need a response from you, I just really would like serious consideration. Can we, the uniqueness of those hardwoods, I'd really like to see a track that some, whoever fills that position has experience managing a hardwood, a diverse hardwood forest. The considerations, I mean, it's just, I'd be glad to talk with you and the chief offline about that more, and I've certainly made that request to the regional forester, was in the seeming, I appreciate it. I want to, I appreciate, you know, we recognize in terms of wildfires, the issues are out there. We need more foresters, period, because of retirements, attrition, you know, you've got to have those professionals. I appreciate your comments about forest roads. I mean, we have, we have decreased our access, especially under President Clinton, dramatically our national forests, and that's, that's not good for our citizens for access, but it's not good for managing the forest either. That's an access issue. I think we're, subcommittee's going to do a hearing on that. Expanding CE's, we've talked about that, expanded collaborative work, all good things, and we're going to continue to work on. I want to zero in what, a little bit of time I have on litigation and litigation costs, and try to quantify it if possible. And if we don't have the numbers, if this is something that you could look at for me, litigation does, threats do have a cost. Just the whole delay of the implementation of the forest plans is a big cause of this wildfire problem. of the forest plans is a big cause of this wildfire problem. And it's not the Forest Service, it's those extreme environmental groups that put a bullseye on your backs. Do we know what the cost of defending those, let's just take a 10-year period, do we know what the cost of defending that litigation has been to the Forest Service?
I don't know the answer to that. We certainly look into it for you and have to brief staff.
Yeah, we talk about litigation and generalities. I'd like, you know, you've got to get to the specifics till we can solve this problem. So, that's a number I'd like, I'd like, no, in just 10 years, we'll be conservative with it, what the loss of forest health has been when our forest plant management plan has been tied up in litigation, not able to be implemented. Do we have any estimate of the loss of forest health that asset?
We can certainly work on that for you, too.
Okay. And then the final one is, what is the loss of the asset value, specifically timber value, either what's been burned, that's probably a little easier to figure out how much has been burned up, but also how much has been aged out. I mean, my hardwood cherry, which is the best in the world in the Allegheny National Forest, if you don't cut it at a particular span, the value of that, every year that goes on, it decreases dramatically. That's a disservice to the American taxpayers who should benefit from the asset. And I'd love to know, get my arms wrapped around about what the loss of that asset value is as well. And then, I'm out of time, but let me just, I'd love to hear from each of you. I know, Under Secretary, you, in the past, have made comments, you don't support this, but looking, and we can talk about this maybe afterwards, do you support the provisions limiting litigation within the expanded collaborative provisions of the Resilient Federal Forest Act? Because I think these three costs are going to be outrageous when we find those. And so, as long as we welcome people to the table in a collaborative way, and we know collaboration works, everything we're, successes we're celebrating is based on collaborative work, if they're welcome to the table, I think we need to, if they're not going to join the table, restricting their litigation abilities in some way is not a bad thing.
Chairman, touch out.
I do have an answer to your earlier question. 19,000 acres, you asked how much insect and disease. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. 19,000 acres, both in the EA and the CE side of the insect and disease, so thanks.
All right. Louhan Grisham, five minutes, or three minutes.
Oh, come on.
Three minutes.
Yes, sir. Under Secretary, I know that my dear friend and colleague, Mr. Thompson, talked about the categorical exclusions and the delay in getting it started, so I don't want to rehash that. My understanding is that we've got 26 projects. My concern is that if we're going to have a best practice standard and we're going to be able to provide advice and support out in the field about such practices, then we need to speed up what we're doing, and we need to get information, certainly back to the members of this committee and to our stakeholders, so that they've got a sense. Can you commit today that you're going to work on that and make sure that we're getting the data that we need?
Absolutely. And I think one of the issues is, we both have to do learning within the Forest Service to learn how these are working on the ground, and that's part of the role. But I think there's also, happy to work with the committee in sharing what we're learning and seeing out on the ground and have a conversation with you all as well.
That would be great, and even, we might have our office reach out to you so that the projects that are in the Southwest in particular, for us to be more inclined and aligned to work with you on the information that you have. We could maybe make some of those visits. My staffer here in this committee room, that would be valuable to us, and hopefully that partnership would also put you in the best possible position to do more in this area, and I appreciate that you'll move it up to a priority list.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think what we see here is a common element. When we talk about the 16%, the budget on fire suppression was 20 years ago and 60% now, and as my colleague, Mr. Lamalfa, brought in, the struggle they're having up there, and you were saying that the fight over the fire suppression, you're having a harder time. What I'm going to ask you to do is, if there's an agency that's blocking you, like the EPA, that's preventing you from doing that, instead of you being the bad guy, come to this committee or come to Mr. Thompson's committee and say, "We need relief on this, because if we don't do that, we're going to be struggling this much more down the road, and that usable wood's not going to be used." The other thing is, Mr. Thompson brought up, one of my main questions, was the cost of litigation, and I know you're going to get that number back to him. What and what groups are doing these? Are they environmental groups? Are they NGOs? And if they are NGOs, are they getting federal money or public money to sue the federal government?
So, you know, as I said, the amount of litigation we're seeing, I think, has dropped. We do have some areas, particularly in Region 1, Montana, northern Idaho, where we see it. The bulk of the litigation, not always, is from environmental NGOs, and they are able to get back some of their costs through the courts for that litigation.
Is that through the sue and settle?
No, it's through Access to Justice Act.
Would you recommend that? Any group suing the federal government should not be getting federal funds to do so?
I wouldn't recommend that. I think there's some very good reasons for that law. It's something that the administration, I don't think, would support, but I think a broader conversation with you all about the litigation challenge and how we address that, I think we'd welcome that.
I yield back. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Anybody else? Dan, three minutes.
Well, thanks. I hope that I can get a little further comment about this Good Neighbor Authority. I know it started in Michigan. The Michigan forester said that he thinks they can get a harvest done by September. Are you aware, can that, is that legitimate? And will that happen? And how is it going around the country? Are these pilot programs? Are we going to do more? Is it all happening now? Or just go into that a little more?
Well, actually, since the testimony was approved, we've actually increased the number of states who've either got a master agreement or a specific project agreement under the Good Neighbor Authority. So, 12 states, 16 different agreements, four more states in the queue. In the Northeast, there are four states that plan some level of timber harvest this year under the Good Neighbor Authority. In the Northeast, a part of the nation, the region has increased its timber sale volume over 48 million board feet since 2014.
So, they're doing that to the Good Neighbor?
We are working to find efficiencies across a number of fronts to increase.
I want to talk about the Good Neighbor Authority, not the general cutting.
No.
This is all, so the Good Neighbor?
Good Neighbor is quite fresh, so there's.
Right, right. Is there an opportunity for tribal governments to participate in this? I had a tribe asking me about this yesterday.
Yeah. Under something called the Tribal Forest Protection Act, we would be able to work with tribes across boundaries, so that would be worth exploring with you.
Okay, all right. I'll yield back. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Secretary Bonney and Chief Weller, Chief Wagner, thank you for coming in this morning. Appreciate that. I know a whole lot more time went into prepping for this hour and 15 minutes than it lasted, and I suspect you guys prepped answers to a lot of questions we didn't ask. That's the beauty of this thing. We keep the questions secret and make you guys go through an awful lot of work. You lead agencies of vital importance to the system. You represent, you're the face of all those thousands of folks out there who get up every day, go to work, try to do their job, run the agencies they do, take on the responsibility they've got, and we appreciate that. We may have some differences of opinion from time to time, but please don't let that morph into some incense that we don't appreciate fully what we do. Everywhere I go, I try to avoid telling people who I'm with, particularly when I'm on vacation in the forest and other places, just to watch you guys working. And I'm rarely disappointed in what I see going on, and just, which to me means it's just everyday folks. It's not some show you put on because a member of Congress showed up. So, thank you for what you do. We'll get the band back together next year in a similar kind of circumstance, but maybe a different band on that side of the table, but I want to thank everybody. So, we'll adjourn for 10 minutes, and if the members want to speak directly to, into the panelists, they'll go to 1302, and that way we'll get the other folks in. So, if you want to speak to them directly, one-on-one, I want you to take that advantage and do that now. With that, we'll stand in recess for 10 minutes. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We'll go ahead and start with our second panel this morning. I'd like to welcome to our witness table Ms. Alexis Taylor, who's the Deputy Under Secretary for Farm and Foreign Agricultural Services, USDA. She's accompanied this morning by Mr. Val D'Alcini, Administrator of the Farm Service Administration, Susan Paul Mary, Associate Administrator, Foreign Agriculture Service, and Brandon Willis, Administrator for the Risk Management Agency. Welcome this morning. Appreciate you being here. Ms. Taylor, floor is yours for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. It's our pleasure to be here again to provide information on the programs and accomplishments of the Farm and Foreign Agricultural Services. Mr. Chairman, you introduced my colleagues who are with me today. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. The past two years have been an increasingly difficult time for U.S. agriculture. Due to the decline in commodity prices, net farm income has dropped by 27% in 2014, by 38% in 2015, and is forecast to drop by 3% this year. USDA's commodity and crop insurance programs are providing a safety net to producers and stabilizing farm income during this market downturn. The 2014 Farm Bill introduced two new farm safety net programs through FSA, the Agriculture Risk Coverage Program, known as ARC, and the Price Loss Coverage Program, known as PLC. We undertook an unprecedented educational and outreach effort, resulting in over 1.7 million producers electing into these new programs. For both 2014 and 2015, the Margin Protection Program for Dairy enrolled over half of all U.S. dairy operations. FSA also provides loans to producers who are temporarily unable to obtain other credit. In 2015, FSA provided nearly 38,000 loans valued at a record $5.7 billion to producers unable to obtain commercial financing. Over 20,000 loans went to beginning farmers in 2015, 40% more than in 2009. Over 9,000 loans went to minority and women producers over that same period, a 65% increase. Since 2009, over $64 billion in crop insurance payments have helped farmers and ranchers through these difficult times, including $17 billion paid during the historic drought in 2012. RMA has also been expanding its reach. For example, the Pasture, Rangeland, and Forage Program is available in the continental United States. Whole farm revenue protection is available in every county in the nation. This is a first for the crop insurance program. And RMA now offers organic price elections on 56 different crops, up from just four in 2011. In addition, incentives provided in the 2014 Farm Bill made crop insurance more affordable to beginning farmers and ranchers, due to a 10% premium discount and a waiver of fees. Over 13,000 producers have used these incentives and saved over $14.5 million. The efforts of FAS in collaboration with the agricultural community have contributed to the strongest seven years in history for U.S. agricultural exports. These agricultural exports support about 1 million jobs here at home. Trade Promotion Authority boosted our ability to complete the negotiations of the Trans-Pacific Partnership, or TPP, which is a landmark agreement. When implemented, TPP, which includes 11 Pacific Rim countries, representing nearly 40% of the global economy, will lower tariffs and eliminate other barriers, helping farmers, ranchers, agribusinesses, and food companies compete in the region. Today, roughly 20% of farm income comes from agricultural exports. Agreements such as TPP hold the promise of increasing exports and, in turn, farm incomes over the long term. FAS trade negotiators are also advocating on behalf of U.S. agriculture in the Transatlantic Trade and Investment Partnership, or TTIP, negotiations. Exports to the European Union, currently our fourth-largest agricultural export market, were valued at $12.3 billion in fiscal year 15. However, European barriers have created a deficit in our agricultural trade. TTIP is an opportunity to address not only the market access commitments, but non-tariff barriers that we're experiencing today. Over numerous Farm Bills, Congress has refined our market development programs. The largest is the Market Access Program, or MAP, which benefits a wide range of U.S. commodities. The Foreign Market Development Program, like MAP, involves work with our cooperator partners. These programs are highly effective. They have been found to provide $35 in economic benefit for every $1 we spend. Also, FAS leads USDA's efforts to help developing countries. Also, FAS leads USDA's efforts to help developing countries. For example, McGovern-Dole Program provides technical assistance and commodities for school feeding and child nutrition projects. It is projected that 3.4 million women and children will be helped in 2017. Further, we are implementing the Local and Regional Procurement Program. We know from USDA's Farm-to-School efforts that bringing locally grown foods into schools has multiple benefits, including added nutrition and increased incomes for local growers. We want to expand that success internationally. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, we thank you for the opportunity to be here today and look forward to any questions you may have.
Well, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Appreciate that. I'll start in five minutes. Mr. Willis, let me brag on you a bit. I'll let you brag on yourself. Improper payments have dropped at your agency from 5.58% in '14 to 2.2% in '15. Thank you for that. Can you talk to us about the steps you've taken at the agency to make that positive improvement, I guess that's redundant, that improvement happen?
Certainly. First, I want to acknowledge the committee, and the last Farm Bill provided some focus and resources to help us make some of these improvements, and I want to acknowledge that first and foremost. Crop insurance is a well-rounded program.
I'd rather not do that because Mr. Lucas is with us this morning, and his head is...
(laughing) Thank you. The crop insurance program is a well-rounded program, and improper payment rate that's half the national average demonstrates that. We started a few years ago, actually, focusing on this, trying to look at ways to more accurately measure improper payments, and then find ways, over the long run, to see reduction. We're, I'd say, just part of the way through. We're continuing to take more steps in the future. To continue to demonstrate this program is something that both farmers and taxpayers can defend and feel good about.
All right. Well, let me go the other way and talk to you about enterprise units and the struggle we have there. Can you update us, update the committee? You know, we thought the Farm Bill allowed producers to elect enterprise units at their choice, and that doesn't seem to be how you guys are implementing. Can you walk us through some of that, where we currently stand?
Yeah, that issue obviously is a little, a difficult issue. From the beginning, when we've implemented the Farm Bill, we have made a sincere effort to try to implement it in a way that uses common sense, use an approach that farmers would appreciate and understand. I had a farmer from the state of Texas in earlier this week, a peanut producer, and that producer specifically brought up this issue and asked about it. I guess for us, it goes back to the fact that we do believe we implemented the statute based upon the language within it. We did look at the report language for guidance. We're kind of, I guess, at the point where we don't know what else to do at this point in time, but we do understand there are some people who wish we'd done that differently.
Okay. And then, let me ask about the ARC payments and the ARC County payments. We've got this anomaly throughout the system where folks on one side of a county line get a full payment, folks in the other county next to it get nothing. Can you walk us through how that's working and talk to the committee about what we can do on the next Farm Bill to address some of those things, I don't think that was an intended consequence?
Mr. Chairman, if I could take that question?
Sure.
You know, I think first and foremost, the ARC County program or just the new PLC and ARC programs are fundamentally different than direct payments from the last Farm Bill. So I think part of it is a mentality shift. It certainly was in Congress, but also for, I think, farmers out there in the countryside. We developed, producer-provided solid data sets in a cascade to ensure that the data that we use, one, protected producer information, but then also, two, ensured that we had solid data sets, both whether it was Nass County or RMA County, these were provided by the farmers. It is a county-based program, so I think one of the things that we're seeing was intentional or part of how Congress structured this, that counties are going to vary. There are different variabilities in those counties on producer yields is a big impact in our county. So I would say we've signed up 1.7 million producers, and for 2014 crop year, we paid $5.2 billion in safety net to those producers. I think that's a strong safety net. I think it's working, but inherently, in the way a county program is structured, means counties are going to have different payment factors in them.
All right, well, thank you. Ms. Taylor, let me ask about this. One of the arguments on Food Aid is that high commodity prices had reduced the amount of food was able to be bought. Commodity prices down, have we seen an incremental increase in the amount that you've been able to buy with Food Aid, given those lower commodity prices? And what's happening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's certainly, there is a correlation there. You know, what we're seeing...
But it works both ways, right? I mean, when prices are high, you're buying less, but now that prices are low, can you, are you demonstrating you're buying more?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you know, as you said, there was a correlation between commodity prices and the amount of tons that we could ship of various foods. We do expect to see this year an uptick on some of the commodities, the tonnage of commodities that we can buy due to lower commodity prices.
Got you, all right. Mr. Lucas, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Administrator D'Alcini, there's currently a push by commercial lending institutions to increase the authorized loan level for FSA guaranteed loans to $2.5 million. Are you familiar with this proposal, and if so, do you have a position or any observations on such an idea?
Well, my observations are these, sir. There is certainly more demand today for our farm loan products at the Farm Service Agency all across the country, as we're seeing a softening in the farm economy and a decline in commodity prices, certainly in your district in West Texas. Elsewhere in the nation, we're seeing that. We've been in touch and have had meetings with the Farm Credit Council, with the American Bankers Association, and other interested members of industry who are, you know, wanting to talk a little bit about what it would mean for us to increase our loan limits. The guaranteed program has annual increases of incremental amounts. The direct loan program does not have those. Those require statutory changes. We'd be happy to work with members of this committee or your teams to develop some thoughts around technical issues associated with that, but one potential ramification of increasing the loan limits is that we'll make fewer and larger loans, thereby, you know, the pool won't be available to as many American farmers and ranchers as it is today.
Do you have any idea off the top of your head how many of these guarantees we're talking about now that are in place?
I'm going to have to get back to you, sir. I don't want to give you incorrect information.
That's just fine, Administrator. To shift subjects on you for just a moment, I want to thank you and your staff for the work on helping U.S. peanut producers who were impacted by the Clint Williams Company bankruptcy last year, something that essentially had not happened in that fashion before, put a huge number of producers in a terrible stress, and now has been resolved to the best that the department can do. Very much appreciative. I just kind of would like to note for the record and to my colleagues that there's been the impression somehow in some places that by addressing the producers at the $355 a ton loan rate, that that basically has made producers totally whole. Just for the benefit of my colleagues here, many of those producers had contracts at $625 a ton.
That's right.
So while USDA fulfilled its obligations 100%, through a very complicated fashion, I very much appreciate that, and I think they do, too. It's just worth noting that those producers weren't made totally whole because they had contracts for $625, and they're taking a $270 a ton haircut. Just an observation for everyone. That said, though, thank you for the department's moving so swiftly, because there were a number of good people who'd been very good managers for sometimes generations, who were caught in a horrible bind, who were on the verge of being torn limb from limb. So just to note that. And if there's anything in the future that we can do to help address your ability to meet those kind of challenges, certainly we'll need to talk about that before the 2018 Farm Bill.
Well, we certainly appreciate those compliments, Congressman Lucas, and I'll make sure to pass them along to those that were involved. It was a creative approach, I think, taken by the department and by the agency, and we worked closely with industry and growers, Congress, and others to make sure that folks, you know, had an opportunity to provide input to the process, and I think that it worked reasonably well.
You bet. And that $355 a ton was critically important to producers matching the loan rate, but in the eyes of some of our media friends, that wasn't making everybody whole. That was doing everything we could to help them appropriately within the law, but they still took a big economic haircut over what happened at that company with that company's bankruptcy that impacted them. With that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Mr. Thompson, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks to all of you for your leadership and your service. Greatly appreciated. Administrator D'Alcini? D'Alcini, sorry about that. I hate messing people's names up. It's the only thing we come in and out of this world with is our name and...
I'm used to it, sir. Happens all the time.
Another good thing. I want to zero in on energy, and the intent of the Biomass Crop Assistance Program, BCAP, is to provide financial assistance to producers to establish dedicated energy crops. To date, how many acres of dedicated energy crops have been created from the program, and how much has been spent through the BCAP to date?
Sir, I'm sorry, I don't have those at my fingertips, but I can certainly provide them later this morning, in fact, to you and the committee.
Okay.
It's been a successful program thus far, and USDA has invested in both project areas, which encourage the cultivation of energy crops, as well as in parts of the Western U.S., for example, where forest residue, ag residue, slash, and other materials are removed from the forest and brought to biomass conversion facilities.
Yeah, it's part of the solution. We were just previously talking about forest health with the Deputy Forest Service and Undersecretary, and creating that market demand. Excellent. Now, Zero, I want to talk a little bit about trade. Specifically, can you speak to expected outcomes for American agriculture in the TPP negotiations? I know some ag groups are very strong in favor of TPP, but others, such as tobacco and rice, have lingering concerns and outright opposition. Is there anything that can be done by USDA to help address those in agriculture who wanted more out of what's being proposed at this point?
Congressman, I appreciate that question. As you mentioned, I think we have strong support across almost all of the agriculture community about, around TPP. It's, I think, a game changer as far as trade agreements go for U.S. agriculture. The Farm Bureau recently came out with a study and found that it will boost net farm income by $4.4 billion. That really, that number to me shows that U.S. agriculture can't wait for this agreement to be passed and to start being implemented. We're seeing our competitors, with, you know, the strength of the U.S. dollar, we're seeing them gain market share right today in some of our key markets, Japan, Vietnam, and really outcompete us because of whether preferential trade agreements or their currency is weaker. And so TPP is vital to lowering that playing field and making sure U.S. products are competitive. You know, one tool that we have at USDA, and we use quite effectively, I think, with the private sector, is our market development programs, thanks large in part to Congress, to this committee, for the strong support. We leverage, those are highly effective dollars that we leverage, as I mentioned in my opening statement, that what we find is for every $1 that the industry puts in or the U.S. government puts in, we're seeing a $35 return on investment, meaning we're selling $35 worth of U.S. agricultural products in those markets. And so, we're working to partner with our various stakeholders on ensuring those dollars are leveraged in a diversity of marketplaces, but also, a lot of them are looking for the coming years when TPP will be implemented, on how they can effectively target those marketplaces and ensure we're in there and promoting U.S. goods, and ensuring that those customers in Vietnam, Malaysia, some of these markets are developing a taste for U.S. products.
There's a lot of anti-trade rhetoric right now in politics, and which I find most of it under or uninformed about the value of trade and about how much that we make here or grow here and we sell there, sell overseas, and what that means. And my understanding is, I want to get your opinion on this, when the most recent recession we went through, which was pretty significant, that of all the industries, the agriculture industry was somewhat resilient to that downturn, that economic downturn that cost so many jobs, devastated so many industries, and my understanding, part of that was just how robust our trade has been. Now, maybe other areas of trade have not been negotiated well in the past, and I think we're doing a better job of setting the rules and Congress driving that. Your opinion in terms of was trade helpful in providing resiliency in the agriculture industry in your most recent recession?
Absolutely, Congressman. What we find is about 20% of farm income is directly tied to U.S. agricultural exports. So opening new markets is key to keeping the ag economy strong. We also find, it's not just about the benefit to farmers and ranchers, what we've also found is for every $1 of agricultural exports, it stimulates another $1.27 in business activity. And I'm sure, you know, you all represent rural districts, you see this, a farmer has a dollar, they're looking to upgrade their facilities, invest in better technology, and that's what we see, the numbers support that.
Yeah, farmers aren't going to save the money, they'll spend it.
I grew up on a farm, Congressman, I saw this firsthand from my dad.
I guess. Thank you, Chairman.
Ms. Kelly, five minutes.
Ms. Palmary, just to follow up, kind of on Mr. Thompson's question, what's your expected outcomes from TTIP?
Congressman, if I could actually take that, I think there's a lot of opportunity here in TTIP. There is, you know, as you look at the U.S. and the EU, it makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of geopolitical reasons why we decided to negotiate this, but there's also a lot of economic reasons, that together we represent about 50% of the world's economy, and it's a little, you know, it kind of makes people scratch their heads to think about why we haven't had one. Even without a trade agreement, we still, they're still our fourth-largest trading partner. But there are a lot of challenges. We have some different philosophies on how we regulate. We have a risk-based, science-based, internationally-recognized kind of rules of the road on how we regulate for various food safety or, you know, non-tariff barriers and measures. And so I think there's a lot of opportunity here, but it's not without challenges as well.
Thank you. And Administrator D'Alcini, what kind of concerns are you hearing from FSA offices in the cotton belt?
Well, we're hearing quite a number. I don't know if the Deputy Undersecretary wants to provide a broader cotton answer, sir, but I can tell you that the offices that I oversee in the cotton belt are working with farmers today on restructuring loans, servicing loans, providing additional financial assistance where it's appropriate. We're also in conversation with the industry here in Washington, and perhaps the Deputy Undersecretary can provide a little bit more detail there.
Please.
Yes, thank you for that opportunity, Congressman. I actually had a couple cotton farmers from Texas in my office just on Wednesday, talking about what they're seeing and what the impacts of the current market conditions around cotton are, how they're affecting them. There was a new and young farmer there as well, and talked about what the impacts, you know, what he's seeing on a cash flow side, and really the strain that the current market conditions are impacting them. We're certainly in close contact. I know the secretary was up here talking about the assistance that we're looking at providing, where we've had active conversations with, in the government, but then also within the cotton industry, and we'll certainly keep this committee apprised as those go forward on what a program that could assist cotton farmers may look like.
And just for the panel, anything you can do to help our cotton, once that infrastructure goes away, more than any other crop, it goes away and it's difficult to rebuild, and we lose cotton for a long time, or it's much more expensive to get back in. And the second thing is never underestimate its impact on other crops, because when cotton's not profitable, they start growing another crop which depresses the prices there. So I just ask that you keep that in mind with all your solutions, and understand that urgency is key here to make sure that we do whatever we need to do quickly. And kind of as a follow-up on credit, and I think this is Mr. D'Alcini on this one, but what can be done to educate young and beginning producers in order for them to better understand the credit opportunities available to them? Because as you know, we have an aging farm population who are farming, and we need to get new and younger farmers engaged for the long term.
Well, that's a great question, sir, and we've done a lot of work throughout the department, but really at the Farm Service Agency, as we are the department's primary lender, to educate new and beginning farmers, returning veterans, women farmers, farmers of color, disadvantaged farmers, others that have not been able to avail themselves of FSA credit in the past. And what we're seeing just this year is that there is a 20% greater increase on our loan tools around the country, and a 40% increase year over year on our microloan, which has been the best tool, I think, for new and beginning farmers. We've made 18,000 of these microloans since the program started in 2013, 70% of which went to new and beginning farmers, 50% of which went to first-time FSA customers. So we're able to bring new folks into the offices through greater outreach in all of our field offices. We've got nearly 2,200 offices around the nation, and they're all really selling the idea of working more closely with beginning farmers and ranchers. We've got a great new service called Bridges to Opportunity, which will allow FSA offices to act as information gateways, not only for our credit programs, not only for our farm programs, but for programs that other agencies, whether it's RMA, or NRCS, or Rural Development Offer. So we're really trying to offer a full suite of services to new and beginning farmers around the country, and I think that the metrics bear that out. We've had a lot of success so far. We're going to keep at it.
Thank you, and that was my next question, but overall, how are the microloans performing?
It's the workhorse of our farm loan portfolio. It's really, I think, one of the best things we've done at the Farm Service Agency in the last few years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Chairman yields back. Dr. Benetcheck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for being here this morning. Could you weigh in on this U.S.-Canada softwood lumber trade agreement? Yeah, it's apparently... in on this U.S.-Canada softwood lumber trade agreement? Apparently, there's a, you know, there's a trade agreement with Canada that's expired concerning soft lumber, and, you know, the Canadians subsidize their timber industry much more than we do, and, you know, it's affected prices, you know, in, you know, my district and around the country. So, is there any movement on renegotiating that, or we have a deal in the works, or what's happening with that?
Congressman, I am going to have to, I don't know the latest, so if I could go back, consult with my colleagues, also consult with the U.S. Trade Representative's Office, we can follow up with you on that.
Yeah, well, you know, it's an important issue across the country, you know, the timber producers always complain about the Canadian bringing in a lot of timber. So, I would appreciate, you know, brisk early follow-up. And the other question I'd have concerns this TTIP stuff, too. I mean, it seems to me, there's been some difficulties in dealing with this, and you mentioned a little bit about the non-tariff issues, and apparently, there's some kind of a pesticide issue in, in the EU that's different from the way the rest of the world deals with. And is this an impediment to our shipping, you know, commodities into, into Europe?
We were, at the end of last year, we were coming up to an issue with a lot of the tree nuts and some specialty crops on the level of a certain pesticide that we used, and the tolerance level. We actually worked on the, on the tree nut side quite closely with the European counterparts to kind of extend a temporary MRL until they could, their
What's an MRL?
Minimum, minimum residue level, sorry, sir, to extend their temporarily, temporary, that temporary minimum residue level of the certain pesticide for another year.
So, this is, is this a part of the TTIP thing, then?
It's on the margins of TTIP. We're each working on various issues. They're not part of the actual negotiating, negotiating itself, but, you know, in order, we need to continue to build momentum on both sides on priority issues for both, I think, us and, and Europe.
There is some question in my mind about the coordination of these international deals here. Agriculture Marketing Service, that's something, that's something different than you, then, right? So, then, are you guys coordinating in what you're doing in these negotiations? I don't understand how this works. Are you both doing the same thing, or how does that work exactly? Is there communication?
Congressman, we actually work quite closely as an interagency. The Foreign Agriculture Service oversees and coordinates the entire department's international activities. But that means on food safety, we work quite closely with the Food Safety Inspection Service, with AFIS, with the Ag Marketing Service. And so, as, not just within trade agreements, but bilateral, when a, you know, a trade issue comes up, we're, we're constantly pulling the team together and ensuring that what we do and agree to, that all the agencies within USDA, that it will work for them.
So, how many different agencies are working on, on this altogether, and how many people they have to pull together to make something actually happen?
It depends on the issue, honestly, Congressman. It, it depends if it's an export issue for, say, meat. It would be FAS and FSIS work, the Food Safety Inspection Service work quite closely on high path avian influenza. We work quite closely with our colleagues in AFIS. And so, it depends on the issue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll yield back.
Chairman yields back, Mr. Yoho, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for being here. Secretary Taylor, you were talking about TPP, and were we negotiating with, like, Japan, like Australia did with their beef? Because with Australia, their beef exports went up 8%, and ours decreased 3%. Are we waiting on this comprehensive TPP instead of just negotiating a bilateral agreement like Australia did?
We have long had, I think, a target on Japan for, as a market there, a priority market there, one of our top markets, even with very high tariffs. But we did negotiate an agreement in a multilateral sense with
So, we're waiting on TPP instead of just
We don't have bilateral negotiations because of
Is there a reason we didn't do that? Because Australia, I think, was ahead of the curve, and they, they did a good thing for their country, and we went down.
Well, TPP really gave us more leverage in getting better market access packages. We are getting the beef tariff to single digits. That's the first time Japan's ever did that. Japan did not agree to that in a bilateral sense with Australia.
Right.
And so, we had better leverage within TPP than we would in a bilateral sense.
Let me ask you about the, along with TPP, on the neonic, is the pesticide, I assume you're talking about in the EU, that they're kind of putting their minimum standards on, or the levels, is that based on science, or is that driven by populism and the environmentalists? Because if you look at Canada, they use over 50 million acres, or spray on their canola fields with neonic, and they haven't seen a decline in their bee colonies or the honey production. In fact, they've gone up. And I just want to hear your opinion on that.
Congressman, actually, the, the specific pesticide was fosatolol that I was talking about. It's used on, but, but I will say this, on the food safe, on the driven-by-science side, they have a Food Safety Commission, or Committee, that reviews all the science of these. And what we find oftentimes is that our scientific body and theirs actually find the same outcome. Theirs maybe takes longer. They also have an additional political layer, oftentimes on approval of some of these pesticide residues, or if it's, you know, certain food safety washes that we use in the United States. So, the food safety part of it, we often come to the same result.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dulcini, let's see here. What kind of concerns are you hearing from the FSA offices in the cotton belt with the price of cotton right now?
Well, we're hearing quite a few concerns, as I expressed to Mr. Kelly. You know, the, our offices throughout the cotton belt, from Texas all the way over to Florida, are very busy working with cotton growers to help them restructure their loans and identify other sources of credit that might be applicable to their operations.
Are you using the microloan program for that?
The microloan program may be a little small for that, sir.
Or they need macroloans?
Right. I think the loan sizes need to be a bit larger, but we're really pulling out an all-of-the-above strategy when it comes to providing credit to our growers.
Okay. Have people expressed a concern about an oil seed program for cotton? And if so, is that something you can implement?
Well, no, no, sir, I don't believe that we can. I think the Secretary was up here several weeks ago and made clear what the limits of USDA authorities were with regard to oil seed. That said, we're working quite closely with the industry, and the Secretary has directed his whole team to work to try and identify a path forward within our legal authorities.
The way we understood it, or I understood it up here, is that they're authorized to go ahead and do an oil seed program, because it says other oil seeds, and doesn't specifically say one over the other. So, if there's something extra you need on that, it would sure help our peanut producers out and cotton producers, if you could get back with us on that.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see, I need my glasses. There's currently a push for the Commercial Lending Institutions to increase the authorized loan level of the FSA guaranteed loans to $2.5 million. Is that a high enough increase in the loan value? I think they're, what, at a half a million now?
Yeah, the guaranteed limits are at 1.3 million.
Okay.
You know, an increase in the limit is a conversation that we've been having with industry, and the Farm Credit Council, and the American Bankers Association, other grower groups, commodity organizations have come to the agency to say, you know, maybe it's time that Congress look at increasing the limits there. And we're happy to come back up to the committee and, and speak with staff and economists and others about our experience. There is an incremental increase that the guaranteed program sees year over year, sometimes though it doesn't really make that dramatic a difference. But there would be a statutory change needed.
Okay, you need a statutory change, that's what I'm getting at. And if so, we can look at that, and I'm sure the chairman will. I'm out of time, and I'll yield back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman yields back, Mr. Roush, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to touch on tobacco and TPP. I just can't help myself on this, since it came up a little bit earlier, and I think everybody knows how I feel about this. And I'm just going to make a comment, and then I'm going to go to a very different question. I think tobacco would be very, very supportive of TPP if one simple thing happened, and that was, it was no longer excluded from the investor state dispute settlement. And, you know, every other legitimate and legal product is protected by law, except for tobacco. And when you take away legal protections for one product, you're basically opening up the door for discriminatory action against another product at a future point in time, a future trade agreement. So, anyhow, enough said on that. I said it for the record, and everybody knows where I am. Question for RMA Administrator Willis, I'm curious about the recent release reports as it relates to poultry, particularly as it relates to disease, catastrophic disease. I'm curious what your reports are showing.
The Farm Bill had a handful of requests for requirements to do some studies, mostly for sectors of agriculture where crop insurance is currently not available. The studies were to evaluate the effectiveness of crop insurance in that sector. What we do with those usually is we contract with the private sector, with individuals who have experience in crop insurance, and understand how federal crop insurance works. What they do is they meet with people in the field, growers, experts, et cetera, and come back with a report. That specific report, there's a common theme with that report and a few others, I think indicates there are some hurdles, to be very frank, to overcome, to offer these types of crop insurance for those types of situations. I think some of the hurdles are, a lot of the growers in the poultry and swine, as well, industries, are contract growers, and they oftentimes do not have an insurable interest. And, you know, obviously, they, they raise them, but they don't actually own the livestock. The Crop Insurance Act, as it stands today, requires them to have an insurable interest. There's another issue with natural causes. Sometimes it's poultry business interruption, not a natural cause. That would also be a hurdle, as far as the Crop Insurance Act concerned. There's also a current cap within the Crop Insurance Act of 20 million for livestock. All this is to say that, the report said it might not be feasible at this point in time. That doesn't mean conversations cannot continue. That doesn't mean that at some point in time, it might not be possible. But it did point out there are some real hurdles before we have a viable program.
Well, thank you very much for that. Definitely is something we've got to continue to think about and, and, and work on. I appreciate the update. I yield back my time, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman yields back, claim a little bit of that time. Brandon, the, those contract growers, is there a business interruption concept that would be appropriate for those guys? A little different model than what you're used to putting in place, but, but that's basically what they're, they've done, is they've interrupted their business.
Yeah, for, for, for business interruption for catastrophic loss, or for business interruption, I'm sorry?
No.
For like the baker type situation?
Yeah, pork and chicken guys who are, are just intermediaries, don't have an insurable interest. They do have an insurable interest in their, in their business.
Yeah, I, I think that is, is one area, and the report did allude to that specific issue. I think that's one where some detailed conversations probably need to take place
All right.
On that. And I also think part of that conversation needs to be talking about the cap that currently exists, because one would hate to have a very useful product that would actually work, and then you hit the cap every time you try to operate it.
Thank you. Mr. Baller, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for your testimony today. I want to ask you about a few different things, and whoever is the best person can feel free to talk about it. I want to start with Cuba. There's been a lot of discussion about Cuba. What currently can agriculture do to sell into Cuba, and what can it not do right now?
Well, I'll talk a little bit what USDA cannot do, what we cannot do, and it's, because of the embargo, we cannot use any of our market development funds that I was talking about a little, a little bit earlier, to promote U.S. product there in Cuba. U.S. agriculture can sell products and foodstuffs to Cuba. They have been able to for quite some time. However, there's restrictions around financing and access, and how they can, can extend terms of credit. So, it's, they can sell, but it's, it's much more difficult than it's selling to any other market in the world.
And if, are there any other countries where we can only sell, I think it's on cash, to Cuba, are there any other countries like that?
I'm not sure if there's any other countries with that, those same restrictions. There are different restrictions, I think, for some other markets that we have more, you know, have various embargoes or restrictions on. But I think the restrictions around Cuba are unique to Cuba.
Okay. And then, if, let's say, someone were to sell beans in Cuba, and it, and it was opened up to a credit basis or whatever, and the terms were not met in Cuba, that they were not, did not fulfill the contract, who, who would be in charge of enforcing that?
If I could, I believe it would be based in Cuba, in their rule of law, the way it would be anywhere else. If, if someone is selling beans into Japan, and there was an issue on them getting payment or not. But I, if I could follow up on that exactly for you, Congressman, for the record, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Because, yeah, I mean, there's concerns about the rule of law in Cuba, and that's one of the questions I have for you. I want to also shift gears a little bit to the International Year of the Pulse. What do you, are there any projects or any initiatives you have going on around the world with respect to pulse crops?
Thank you for that question. I was honored to be able to attend the U.S.-North American launch of the International Year of pulses in New York City, with a lot of farmers from the western part of the country. And the efforts around these kinds of activities is highlighting the nutritional value, the uses of pulses, and it's an education campaign in general. The U.S., and in FAS in particular, will, we are working with our commodity buys, and particularly in our McGovern-Dole programs, for the, using that education effort to increase our ability to have pulses be a part of that program. I can't give you exactly what that's going to look like after this year, but we know that it's been helpful. The research is really strong. I saw the presentations in New York, and I am a believer that we need to be pushing these kinds of nutritional products for, when we are doing it.
And is that something you could share with my office, or even the committee, some of the information that you have on that, and what you're doing in that regard?
Clearly. And also, our sister agency, NIFA, the Sunny Ramaswani was there with me, so we know that there's activity and connection.
What is it, NIFA?
The National Institute for Agriculture.
Okay.
They'll be here this afternoon, I believe.
Okay.
Food and eggs.
All right, thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Chairman yields back, Ms. Lamoff, five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and for panelists for appearing for, with us here today. I, coming back to the TPP, some of my colleagues expressed some concern, or even a little dismay of how that's gone with some of the other crops as well. And we have a very major rice-growing industry in Northern California that is very disappointed with the outcome as well. It feels like that rice and a few other crops feel like they're always the tail end of the dog being wagged here, that are the afterthoughts in trade negotiations, and it feels that way to them this time as well. When a, in a 21st century trade agreement, we see that new access for rice is less than 1% of existing numbers, that's, that's quite a under, underperformance there in negotiations. USA Rice, it creates more than an eighth of a million jobs, $34 billion in our national economy. I think we could have done a little better in securing a bit stronger market share for that industry, especially with how much we get dumped upon us in this country here from those areas. So, what, what can I go tell my growers in this, that we can, we can say that the USDA will be doing to help address these shortfalls, to make a more palatable deal, should it come to that, for the, for the industry?
Thank you for that question, Congressman. First, I would like to say rice was not treated as an afterthought in the negotiations. They were a priority for, for the U.S. government in negotiating. Rice is a highly sensitive issue in many of these markets. I think when you look at Japan specifically, they've actually excluded rice in every FTA they've ever done. So, this FTA is the first time, TPP is the first time that they've ever opened market access for rice. And I would say it's actually meaningful. Valued, we estimate somewhere between 30, or excuse me, $43 and $60 million in additional sales at the current prices. So, there's that immediate benefit, I think, to our rice industry today, once TPP is passed. But then, there's also benefits in the future that will come as other countries, and there's already been a whole list of other countries already kind of knocking at the TPP door, as I would like to say, that have said that they want to come in. And that, the U.S. being in TPP gives us even more influence and leverage to say, you want to join TPP, we need serious access for all agriculture products.
Well, let me, let me cut in there a little bit. They may say it's a sensitive issue to them in Japan, but the stuff they sell us, that may, is maybe a sensitive issue as well. I mean, their, their markets, their consumers would like to buy this product. The barriers are The barriers are put up by their governments and lobbying. And so it's, it's sensitive to our growers as well. So at some point, they need to be held accountable for a tiny amount of new access that, if I remember the amount of tons that would be newly accessible, five large growers could meet that need, okay? Five large rice, or maybe six in California could meet the new access amount that was actually negotiated. I know there's some talk out in the ether, maybe allowing some more in the future, but you got to, you know, when you go to your banker, you got to be able to put your finger on being able to actually produce. And with the price of rice going down as much as it is, you know, whether they felt like an afterthought or not, the end of the day, the growers don't feel like the TPP did hardly anything to help them. So again, I want you to take that thought back with you, that the initial access was something that could be done in, inside one county of Northern California's growing area.
I appreciate your comments, Congressman. So there is the market access piece. As I was saying, you know, there are future countries who are going to be coming in, who will, we will have more leverage to ensure that that market access continues to grow. But particularly, specifically, I think in Japan, the access in TPP was starting at 50,000 tons, growing to 70,000. As I said, that's worth $60 million to producers. I think that's not nothing. I think that's meaningful, particularly today in today's farm economy. But also, we were able to secure many improvements to how Japan operates their tariff rate quota to make it more streamlined. So we're able to sell more directly to the consumers, as you said, in Japan, who have a desire for the quality product that our producers produce here in the United States.
Just for perspective, you said 50,000 tons. My farm can grow 10,000 tons, okay?
Chairman Yost back. We'll do a second round, so I'll recognize myself for five minutes. Ms. Taylor, on the food aid shipping costs, studies are showing that the international freights are down, costs are down from 29% to 23%, yet internal costs have gone from 5% to 25%. Can you talk to us a couple of things about what's happened, that it costs so much more to move the food around once it's in-country, and what are you doing with respect to these lower commodity prices to perhaps pre-position things that would allow, you know, a better use of the, of the money?
I will take that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Some of this I will need to get information from our colleagues at USAID to give you precise numbers, but what I know from their operations, we were working with them last year on wheat shipments to South Sudan, and the ability for them to get food into the remote areas around some pretty insecure barriers was very, very expensive. So USAID is dealing with a lot of these types of situations and crises, which has put their price, their internal transportation costs at a very high level. For our own programming and McGovern-Dole and for Food for Progress, we are seeing less of those increases. So I would like to work with our colleagues at USAID to get you some precise numbers.
Okay. We've got, I appreciate that. We've got this ongoing conversation about what those levels ought to be, and then just trying to make sure we understand those programs. I've got a que, I don't know who to address this question to, but I've had a long-running gentleman's disagreement with Secretary Mavis, Secretary of the Navy. He's a great guy, gentleman, respect his work a great deal. We just have a disagreement about algae-based jet fuel. My understanding that he worked with somebody at USDA to create a fund that would fund a refinery to, to do biofuels, and we're doing an investigation on that. And we want to make sure I understand who we need to address our questions to, because I'm not, not a, I wear two hats. Obviously, biofuel would be beneficial to production agriculture, but about the same token, we've got tremendous stresses on the operation and maintenance side of the Department of Defense, and they're being used to develop things that are, that are really better left up to Department of Energy and/or something else. And so trying to find out. In the, in the U.S., in the NDAA we passed for this year, there is a restriction on the Navy to, to buy unconventional fuels at a price that exceeds what you could buy an equivalent gallon of jet fuel for, as an example. I want to make sure that USDA is not backside funding this effort to draw down the price per gallon of this fuel in contravention of the NDAA. So, Ms. Taylor, is that your, fall under your deal?
Congressman, this, this does not fall under the FFAS mission area, but I've been told that, that you have sent a letter, an oversight letter, and questions for the record. We are working quite quickly to get you a response, response to those.
Okay. That, that does, I just want to make sure it's not getting lost in the shuffle, because this is important to me, and it's, you know, I got, I got conflicting interests. Because on the ag side, obviously, it helps producers who are on this business, but by the same token, we've got incredible strains on the Department of Defense budget, as big as it is. You know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to buy jet fuel for 25 bucks a gallon or 15 bucks a gallon when the market is $3 or $4 a gallon. And that's just a gentleman's disagreement, because I do have a great deal of respect for Secretary, Secretary Mavis. With that, we'll go to, who wants, Mr. Lucas? Anybody else want a second round? Ms. Thompson, five minutes.
Just a real quick follow-up on the trade. You know, one of the criticisms I've heard, that we hear about, about MAP and FMD funding is that it goes to, to large companies. Any idea, how many corporations receive MAP and FMD funding? What is the distribu, who are the, who's, what's the distribution of folks that are benefiting, growers that are benefiting from this?
Congressman, we actually are quite public on who our cooperators are. We put lists on our website. There's about 80, and the range is quite diversified. You know, we are working, as agriculture has evolved over the years and has become diversified, so has our cooperator partners. I was just in, at the Gulf Food Show in Dubai in the UAE, and the Intertribal Ag Council had several Native American businesses there. I've talked to folks from our Organic Trade Association, who's in a cooperator, and looking at using these funds to get into more trade shows and more export markets. So I would say our cooperators and the, and the size and the scale are as diverse as U.S. agriculture is.
Very good. Thank you. Chairman, I yield back.
Chairman Yost back. Ms. Yoho?
Ms. Paul Mary, the annual international food assistance report, a joint product of the USDA and USAID, is due April of each year, April 1st. And to my knowledge, we have yet to receive the IFAR report that was due almost 12 months ago. Why is it so late, and when can we expect it?
Thank you for that question.
Are you sure?
We do some things really well at FAS, and we are not as good at selling our successes. And this is one of those reports that is crucial to, to report in on all that we've been able to accomplish. I checked on it this morning. It is in the last stages of clearance, and I hope to have it to you as soon as possible.
This is from a year ago, right?
This is the 14. The 15 is in draft, so I know we are going to be working to get that here on time this year. It is important to me.
And you said we can expect that when?
On time is what I'm hoping for.
So that'll be last year and this year's, 2014 and 2015?
Both of them, yeah, both of them are in the works.
And you understand the reason, because we can't do accountability if we don't get those reports. And again, with the budget crunches that we have, it's imperative that we get it, so I'd implore you to do that. And again, I want to kind of talk about the European Union, Union in the process of implementing pesticides, that it seems to be out of step with the science-based regulatory approach, followed by the U.S. and nearly every other country in the world. What is the administration doing to ensure that the new EU policy does not become a barrier to the U.S. ag exports? And again, it was kind of what I'd asked about before, you know. I've read several reports on the NEANIX and the EU, that they are banning them, not based on science, but based on political pressure.
I appreciate that question, Congressman. You know, as I, as I said before, I do think they have a scientific committee that oftentimes finds the exact same outcome as our, as our regulators find on the safety of a product or the appropriate levels to use products at, or similar. But sometimes they have this additional political layer. It's something we spend, I personally spend a lot of time on, talking to my European counterparts, Secretary Vilsek does as well, and it's certainly a priority. Part of, so on, you know, specific issues as they arise, we're working on them outside of, kind of alongside TIP, but not really in, as part of it. But we're working on regulatory coherence between our two governments as part of TIP as well.
Okay. I was asking Ms. Paul Mary, too. I would like to get her to weigh in on that. Do you differ from that, or?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. Mr. Willis, on crop insurance, as the ARC programs increase and they increase coverage to different crops, it'll cost more to fund these crops in the federal, at the federal level. Do you, what do you anticipate as far as meeting those extra expenditures as far as the cost of the crop insurance? Will that go down on the federal side? Will the farmers be more responsible for paying more of the crop insurance? Or do we need to raise taxes or fund the program more from a federal level? They anticipated growth in the program.
Can I just make sure I understand the exact question?
Sure.
So, is the question the impact upon crop insurance with ARC, or is the question more the impact of ARC upon the federal budget? I just want to make sure, so.
Well, they're kind of tying together, because as we increase more coverage, different crops, especially crops, like blueberries in my state, when it first came out, it covered, I think, five counties, but we grow it in a lot of the other counties, and now most of the other counties are covered. So it was an increase in coverage, you know, and the farmers are paying a percent, and the federal government's paying a higher percentage of the coverage. So as that grows, there's going to be funding shortfalls. So what do you anticipate, you know, five years down the road in the increased coverage, and where do you recommend that funding comes from?
Well, I think if we look at history, what we see is, while the cost of crop insurance may increase slightly, we see that there is not a need for other more costly forms of assistance, such as ad hoc disaster, et cetera. So I think in the long run, we have, you know, over the last 30 years, really, we've seen a slow and a steady growth of crop insurance. But since 2007, I believe, we haven't seen the ad hocks, which were a very costly form of disaster assistance. We also see farmers staying on the farm. You know, one of the things I think we often forget is, we don't read stories about farmers after 2012 who were leaving the farm. I think a lot of that was because of crop insurance and the impacts that we don't talk about, because they didn't happen, because that's a good story in and of itself.
It is, and I agree.
If I could just add one thing to that, Congressman.
Yes, ma'am.
Yoho, you know, the way I think Congress really worked on the new ARC and PLC programs, they were done in a way to, to complement the crop insurance programs and not supplement crop insurance, per se. And so I think that's what we're seeing, is ARC and PLC are part of the safety net, but so is crop insurance. And we haven't seen, I think, a shift from producers buying less crop insurance because of ARC or PLC.
All right. Thank you. I'm out of time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Benetchev.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of quick follow-up questions, and the one that Mr. Yoho brought up, how is it that you're able to get the 2015 USAID report done on time, but the 2014 report is a year late? Now, is there a particular problem with that, or is there two parallel teams working on it? What is, just tell me briefly why, you know, the situation is, yeah?
Well, some of what happened during the FY14 reporting was, there were some new laws that were implemented, and the way those were dealt with in the report took a little bit more time. We are working with our colleagues at AID, because this is the International Food Aid Report, so they're back in force with the teams on both, in both agencies, pulling this together. I think we've got a system now that works more smoothly, and that's what I'm counting on to get as.
All right, all right. And then I just wanted to follow up a little bit further about this Canadian American software agreement. Who in your department would know about that? So that, I just want to make sure we, you know, that we get this follow-up. Who would know about that?
We have a software team back at FAS, and I will check in with them as soon as we get back to it.
But you don't know a person, you don't know a person?
I don't have that name on the top of my head.
Okay. All right, I'll yield back, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rousher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One item I want to bring up, and it's so critically important, but doesn't always have the political urgency behind it, and that's research. Tell me where we are with our research programs, any highlights that we have. I know that funding has stayed relatively stagnant, probably the past 10, 20 years or so. And I just wanted to see if, see if you had any highlights on that.
Congressman, I believe my colleagues from the REE missionary is testifying, or testifying later today, and they would be the appropriate missionary that oversees all of the various research efforts going on at USDA.
No problem. Follow-up unrelated to research, TIP, you mentioned it earlier. What's our timeline on that? What exactly are we expecting to get out of that? What are, what are our major challenges going to be?
Well, I think on timing, we are committed to allowing substance driving the timeline. And I, one thing, I believe that a strong agriculture package in TPP and a strong vote in TPP from the agricultural community and agricultural members will, will help drive a strong, comprehensive agricultural package. The secretary has often said that agriculture on its own might not be able to pass an agreement, but it certainly can prevent one from passing Congress. And I think that correlation is going to be important, but I, I won't speak to the timeline. We're obviously committed in making this a priority for this year, but really, we need the substance on, across the economy to be there, and certainly agriculture is part of that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, yep. Mr. Lamoff.
All right. Thank you. Going to be brief on that. So just so I can take this back home and clarify on the TPP and market access there for, for rice. California's rice production, more or less on acres, is about 2 million tons a year. What they had sought was 100,000 tons of new access there, and came away with a figure that shows about 1% of new access. And so when I, you want me to report that home as a, as a win, right?
Well, Congressman, we walked away with 70,000 tons of new access in, into just the Japan market, with the ability to grow further as others like South Korea.
How long will it take to get to the 70 figure?
I don't know the exact, I can't recall the exact tariff phasing schedule, but I can certainly get that to you.
Please, because my understanding is that it comes in at 50, and all the rest is, you know, pixie dust.
It, it grows over time, over a certain tariff, or certain years to get to that 70,000. I don't know the exact time to grow there.
All right. Well, I'll be looking at my USA Bay label rules real carefully over time as well. So thank you.
Chairman Yost, I want to thank the, the panel. We're going to let you off a little early. We, we said you need to be here an hour and 15 minutes. As I told the previous panel, I'm sure you prepared a lot of answers for questions that we didn't ask this morning. I want to particularly thank you, this panel, because with Mr. Dolcini's FSA group and Brandon's RMA group, you probably have the most customer contact with production agriculture, broadly speaking, of anybody in USDA. And you do, your team does a great job across the board, helping implement new farm bills, all those new provisions, working year in and year out with, with producers that, that rely on your programs. And your team gets up every day, does a great job, and I want to just thank you that. Please express that to them. As I told the other panel, if we have disagreements, it's just, it's about policies, it's not about, it's, don't let that morph into thinking that we don't appreciate what you do and how well you do it. And so I want to thank everybody, and the panel has let you off, get you out early. So thank you all very much for being here. We've got lunch available in 13:02, and so we'll take about a, will we go, I don't know if the other panel's ready yet. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, so lunch is at 13:02. We'll be back here at, what time are we supposed to start the next panel?
11:45.
11:45? Okay. Let's, let's be back in here at 11:50. Let's, let's be back in here at 11:50.
Good morning, still, I guess, for a couple of minutes. Let me gather our team back up. We're having a quick bite. And there's food in 1302 when you all transition out. There's a lot of sandwiches and stuff. You're welcome to them as they come in. I'll briefly start our introductions. So this third panel will be led by the Honorable Catherine Woteke, who is the Undersecretary for Research, Education, Economics at USDA. She's joined by Shivanda Jacob Young, Administrator for Agriculture Research Service, Sunny Ramaswamy, who's Director of the National Institute of Food and Agriculture, Mr. Joseph Riley, the Administrator of National Agricultural Statistics and Service, and Ms. Mary Boham, who's the Administrator for Economic Research Service. So thank you all very much for being here this afternoon. And Ms. Woteke, if you have the floor.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman Conaway, and good morning, distinguished members of the House Agriculture Committee. My colleagues and I are very pleased to appear before you today and provide an overview of the work that we do in research, education, and economics. I'm going to briefly summarize our written testimony and request that that be entered into the record, the full testimony.
Yes, ma'am.
We in the United States, as well as actually around the world, are facing some critical problems and opportunities as they relate to the productivity of agriculture. Investments in research are an important factor in surmounting these challenges and also creating new opportunities for farmers and ranchers here in the U.S. Our work is based on the premise that the federal government has a role in advancing scientific knowledge to promote our nation's social and economic well-being. And the agencies in the mission area do that by investing in areas in which the for-profit industry does not invest. This is research our country needs to keep our food supply safe, secure, and abundant, to ensure the profitability of farmers and ranchers, to improve nutrition and food safety for lifelong health, to reduce pollution and improve the environment through climate-friendly agricultural practices, to safeguard the sustainable use of our natural resources, including an abundant and safe water supply, and to address our nation's energy needs. Underinvestment in the food and agricultural sciences depletes the foundational knowledge base and affects our nation's global preeminence in economic well-being. I'd like to provide a few brief examples that are the results of our research programs, starting with the Agricultural Research Service. Since 2009, ARS scientists have received 391 patents for their research and were also responsible for over 31,000 scientific publications. Last year, ARS scientists developed and transferred to industry an effective vaccine against the highly pathogenic avian influenza strain that killed more than 45 million chickens and turkeys in the U.S. last year. NIFA measures its success through the impacts that its grants have on the public good. And scientific advances resulting from NIFA-funded research, education, and extension activities contributed more than $9.5 billion over the years 2009 to 2015. One example of this is the coordinated agricultural projects that focused on improving wheat and barley for changing environments that yielded more than 100 different commercial varieties with over $1.8 billion in production value. These grants also trained more than 100 students, preparing them to fill some of the very important high-tech jobs that are available in the agricultural industries. Despite their relatively small size, the remaining two REE agencies, the National Agricultural Statistics Service and the Economic Research Service, have an outsized impact. They provide an essential service to policymakers, regulators, markets, as well as to the academic community every day. As principal federal statistical agencies, NAS and ERS provide data that's relevant to policy issues as well as program decisions that USDA agencies make every day. And in doing this, NAS and ERS must maintain credibility among data users, maintain the trust and the confidentiality of data providers, maintain independence from political and other external influence. NAS's mission is to provide timely, accurate, and useful official statistics and service to U.S. agriculture. And with the 2014 Farm Bill implementation, the Farm Service Agency relies on NAS's county estimates to enable administration of the Agriculture Risk Coverage Program as well as the Price Loss Coverage Program. And ERS studies are widely recognized in the research community for their credibility, timeliness, and use of cutting-edge data, models, and methods. And some of ERS's recent research has been focusing on trade agreements and examining the potential impact that these agreements have on producers and also showing the implications long-term for the health of U.S. agriculture. So we've made some very significant strides, we believe, but in research, there's always more to be done. Moving forward, we really are looking to having a sufficient continued investment in developing our scientific talent as well as funding research that's going to be addressing those challenges facing producers across the country. We thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today, and my colleagues and I look forward to answering your questions.
Well, thank you, ma'am. An exercise of Chairman's prerogative, we're going to reverse the order and start with Mr. Lamoffa, five minutes. All right, then, Mr. Molinier, how about Mr. Rousser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got ahead of myself at the last panel asking about research, so I'm eager to see you. Research is one of those areas that is so critically important but oftentimes doesn't have the political urgency. I know funding has been relatively, I'm trying to think of the right word here, flat, maybe stagnant might be an adjective as well. Talk to me about the needs that we face, you know, any exciting advancements. Obviously, we have a growing world population, less and less farmland all the time. We've got to be able to produce more on less. And this is a great opportunity to share with the committee and get it on the record exactly what the needs are and how we can be helpful moving forward.
Well, Mr. Rousser, you're very, very much on target to describe our funding situation as flat. In fact, if you look at the buying power currently of the appropriations to these four agencies and adjusting for inflation, the current level of support is less than it was in 2010. And in addressing that, we've certainly been looking to reduce any opportunities for duplication of effort and actually have been reporting, as required in the 2014 Farm Bill, annually about our efforts to reduce those duplications where they do exist. And in fact, at this point, we believe there's very little that's going on within our agencies with respect to duplication. Quite the contrary, the programs are very complementary and also complementary with those that are conducted in the private sector. We've also been looking for ways to increase the use of our information, and one of those steps has been to make our research publications, as well as the data underlying them, open and accessible in machine-readable form. So the agencies, for example, the research agencies are committed to that. And, for example, some of the genetics and genomics databases that ARS is a major developer of are enormously helpful to plant breeders in academia as well as in private companies. So we're pursuing a variety of different ways to make the best use of the funds that are made available to us.
Pardon me there, shut my microphone off. What areas in particular do you think we need a real shot in the arm? Is there a specific area, you know, of research that, in terms of priorities and prioritizing funding, where you think we really need to focus?
Well, I can start off by just naming two, and I'm sure that Dr. Jacobs Young and Dr. Ramaswamy will have some additions that they would like to add. But one of the areas that has been of top priority for us has been to increase the amount of competitive grants funding that the National Institute of Food and Agriculture has. The flagship grants program is called, for short, AFRI, the Agriculture and Food Research Initiative. And we're requesting in the 2017 President's Budget Request essentially to double the appropriation to AFRI, to the fully authorized amount of $700 million. So that would be one area that I would flag, increasing the funding that goes to universities because that has actually a double benefit. It produces new knowledge and it also trains students, undergraduate and graduate students, to move out into the workforce. The second area that I might highlight is also in this year's budget request, and it relates to antimicrobial resistance. This is a problem that affects animal health and it also affects public health and for which the agencies in REE play really a key role in the development of alternatives to the use of antibiotics in livestock feeding operations. So we feel that this is an area that really we need to be investing more in and are requesting an increase of $22 million in the Agricultural Research Service 2017 request for that purpose of examining, developing alternatives to the use of antibiotics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My time's expired.
Chairman, you go back, Mr. Yoho, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate it. And since you brought, we're on that topic about antibiotic resistance. The research I've read, I'm a veterinarian by trade and I practiced for 30 years, food-animal production specifically. And for the last 35 years, the research I see, when I talk to people like Dee Griffin, the veterinarian that works with a lot of the feedlots, we talk about how much antibiotic residuals are in meat carcasses that they test, and it's less than .001 percent, which is one one-thousandth of a percent, which is virtually none, or one one hundredth of a percent, which is virtually none. And, you know, we've seen other countries and done studies in the European countries where they've taken the preconditioning antibiotics like orimycin and those out of the preconditioning, and they've seen their production yield decrease. They've seen their sickness in the animals increase, the overall production costs go up, yet there's been no change in the antibiotic resistance. In fact, they still see it. So the correlation, I don't see tied to the science that I would like to see to, you know, go on with the VFD, the Veterinary Feed Directive that just came out. And we're getting a lot of producers saying it's an onerous rule, and I'd like to hear your comments on that.
Well, we agree that the industry has been terrifically successful at reducing the amount of antibiotics that are being used and that the residue levels in meat are actually very low. The issue is, though, that by continuing to feed antibiotics, there is the development and of resistance to those antibiotics in the gut microflora that can be activated.
I understand all that. I really do. I've got a great background on that. But again, without the use of those, your production costs go up, and we've not seen the correlation of the antibiotic resistance. You know, we're talking about tetracycline that has other benefits, too. It does stimulate the immune system, is one of the benefits. It does stimulate the immune system, is one of the benefits of that. In conjunction with a good background in program of vaccinations for the, you know, respiratory diseases and the clostridials, it's an imperative tool in the arsenal of the producers. And what we're seeing is an—what we're seeing, in my opinion, is it's an overreach of federal government regulation that's solving a problem that is not really at the root of the problem. I go to the human doctor so many times, and they'll want to put me on a Z-Pak, which is one of the most powerful antibiotics you can get without doing sensitivity and culture and all that and the blood work ahead of time, whereas in veterinary medicine, we're doing that. And you said we've done a good job at reducing the antibiotic levels. There—when you're down to .001% or .0%, it's virtually no residue. And if you look at hormone levels like estrogen, cows will have more estrogen just from grazing green grass than they do from the supposedly implants that we see. And so I think sometimes this gets hyped up in the media, and it's not based on science. And we're spending a lot of money on research in the ag sector, and we need to have a real strong program of educating the public on these things, and I would like to see more effort in that.
Well, we certainly agree on the need for educating the public, and we also, from the research agency's perspective, our role is to be providing that information base that's going to inform good public policies. It's also our responsibility to be looking to develop alternatives to the use of antibiotics. And there are a lot of very promising research directions: prebiotics, probiotics to improve the immune system of animals, improved vaccines, wider spectrum of vaccines being available, bacteriocins, lytic enzymes, you know, a whole range of different approaches. So that's the direction to support our livestock industry that we see our research going in.
And I appreciate the research you're doing, and I don't want to steal Mr. Chairman Lucas's thunder on citrus screening, but coming from Florida, we thank you very much for that. And if we have a second round of questions, I will ask something on that, and I will yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, you go—Mr. Kelly.
Ms. Secretary, how does RE guarantee that—or guard against duplication of research?
Well, we have a variety of different approaches that we take in planning our research programs that are—our primary way of assuring that the research that we undertake is unique and important, and it's going to be addressing the needs of agricultural producers. In all of the agencies that are represented here, they have a cycle of planning that goes to the—in the Agricultural Research Service, to the program and project level. Within the National Institute of Food and Agriculture, they take what they call a portfolio approach. And in ERS and NAS, planning cycles that also—all four agencies involving stakeholder input. So as part of these planning cycles, they consult with the scientific community, as well as with commodity organizations, scientific societies, to identify what the needs are, the unmet needs, the big questions. Those are also then taken into account in developing a plan of work that goes through further discussion and refinement. The project proposals then are developed at—within the intramural agencies by the specific investigators in line with the priorities that have been identified. And at the end of each of these cycles of planning, the entire program that was conducted under that is reviewed with that broader stakeholder input. So all of it is very much informed by consultation with the external community. Internally, we make sure through a variety of consultations that there is a coordination that's going on among the agencies. And we've also, as—in response to a directive from—the Congress in the Farm Bill in 2008, developed an overall roadmap for agricultural research and an action plan that guides the overall priorities of all of the agencies, and we report on what we've conducted under that each year. So that action plan gives a kind of an umbrella to the work that all of the agencies undertake.
And Administrator Riley, what is the fundamental difference between agricultural estimates and the census of agricultural programs?
Well, the agricultural estimates is our annual program measuring basically acreage production and yield of the different commodities across the country, which is done by a series of probability-based samples of producers and farmers. The census of agriculture is an enumeration of the entire farm population, the 2.1 million farms out there, which is used more as, you know, a complete baseline that we adjust in our samples and design our five-year program based on the results of the census.
And why do some farmers feel that NAS—NASS contacts them so frequently and ask personal questions, you know, personal-in-nature questions? Why do they feel like these? And I know that we had oversight on that, and we just have to be very cautious that the questions that we ask are agricultural-based in getting the answer. Can you comment on that, please?
Well, we go through—in any survey that we do, as Dr. Watecki talked about, we engage stakeholders across the country, both within government and on the public side, of what data is needed. So we try and we do every effort we can to make sure whatever questions we ask has a legitimate need for some type of policy discussion. Why we contact farmers and they perceive that we are contacting them repeatedly is that there is a growing need for agricultural information, and some of the farm operations are, through consolidation, are so large and so impactful that if you're trying to produce reliable estimates or whatever data down to a local level, you've got to sometimes go back to those same large producers in many of our programs. Regrettably, that's just the nature of the game.
Mr. Chairman, my time's expired.
Chairman, you go back. Mr. Thompson, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks to all of you, once again, for your leadership and your service and for being here today. I want to start out and ask you about specialty crop research initiatives. It's an important issue, obviously, in U.S. agriculture, and we've broke some new ground here. So, Dr. Ramaswamy, one of the provisions in the 2014 Farm Bill included greater input from the specialty crop industry when awarding projects and allocating funds in the competitive grant programs, including AFRI and the Specialty Crop Research Initiative. Can you tell us how NIFA is—has been implementing this provision, ensuring that the money being spent through AFRI and SCRI is going towards industry-supported research?
Good morning, and thank you very much, Mr. Thompson, for that question. And yes, sir, we have now are through the third round of undertaking the two-step review process. The first step is an industry relevancy evaluation that's undertaken by representatives of the industry, and they make a recommendation. They also provide us a rank order and—of the ones that should be going forward to the next round, which is the Scientific Merit Review, and they also provide a rank order. And that information, along with the comments that have been made, is provided verbatim to the scientific review panel. We also try to bring in some members from the industry relevancy panel onto the scientific review panel itself as well. The chair of the industry review panel also serves as the chair of the scientific review panel, at least in the last year. And this year, we've—you know, this year, again, we're going to be proposing to do that. And so that information is utilized, and then there's a full-born, full-fledged scientific review process that's undertaken, and that group will incorporate the information from the first review as well, and then make recommendations on what projects are going to be funded. And as—the NARI board has a subcommittee that actually looks at whether we are or not doing the right things, and they give us some feedback as well. So based on that sort of a feedback over the last—now, as I said, the third round, we have iteratively improved in the whole process.
Yeah, and that's very much appreciated. Appreciate your leadership in that area. You know, we're under more and more pressure from—appropriately so—from constituents and the citizens, you know, expecting—wanting to know what our outcomes are, our effectiveness, and making sure we're doing the right things based on sound data. And so—that's grown and important. So Administrator Riley, I know that—and I don't think this helps the fact that we've inflation-adjusted—in inflation-adjusted terms, the NASS budget has really been flat over the last 10 years, despite the fact that, from a citizen perspective, there's more accountability. They're actually paying attention now, which is a really good thing. I think the founders would be pleased. And yet, we're not adjusting to, you know, provide increased support for getting the data. And certainly—and we've seen several examples where NASS will drop important reports, such as the July cattle report was canceled. How has the number of surveys and reports administered by NAS changed over time? And I—I—and we—I recognize the need for better resourcing, but with the resources you have being flat for 10 years, which is really a decline, and with the increasing need, how have you—what mechanism do you use to prioritize what you get done?
And that's a very good question, because we're always looking to prioritize. And what we try to do is look at what data is needed for whatever policy decision, and are there other sources of it? Or in lieu of eliminating a report completely, we look at how often we have to release that information and how often we could provide it. So, for example, for the July cattle report, we realized that that was kind of, you know, something that we had—didn't have the funds to do, but in looking around, we realized that we do a very extensive January cattle report. We do ongoing monthly cattle-on-feed information, and then we work with the Food Safety and Inspection Service and publish all the slaughter information on a regular basis. So for the cattle industry-specific, we made sure, yes, it was another important data point, but it wasn't void of eliminating something completely. And that's what we attempt to do as much as possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
If I might just add a little bit, NAS has also taken a number of steps to reduce the costs of the data collection and processing, automating the interviewing process, centralizing their telephone interviewing, and that has enabled them to maintain as many of the surveys as they have been able to do.
Any idea what—I don't know if you can capture that somehow, but that increase in efficiency, like over 10 years ago, you know, how you would quantify that? Because I assume it's probably been leaps and bounds, given technology that's available.
Well, one of the key measures, as I look at just at our overall staffing level, we are down about, you know, 15% staffing level, just of where we were a couple of years ago. And we were able to do that by standardizing our processes, introducing more automated steps, and eliminating and centralizing some of our functions to do them more efficiently. We opened up a new operating center out in St. Louis, Missouri, and we do almost a lot of our extensive telephone data collection out of there, and all of our forms that are filled out by the respondents come back there for a sort of a centralized data capture operation, which we could do much more efficiently rather than through a distributed fashion.
Thank you for your efforts.
Mr. Lucas, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the issues that caught my attention and soar, of course, as Dr. Yoho noted, is very important to a lot of members of this committee, the wonders of this thing called citrus greening. And, Dr. Ramaswamy, early this year, the NIFA awarded several projects for citrus disease research and extension program through that. Do you feel like the selected projects can effectively address the threat posed by citrus greening?
Congressman Lucas, thank you very much for that question. Good to see you again, sir. And yes, sir, I believe that the projects that were selected by NIFA are going to have very significant impacts, as NIFA projects tend to have a longer timeline in looking at the return on investment. But I'll give you a couple of examples of something that's happening right now. One of those is the University of Central Florida received funding to develop nano pesticides—it's a zinc compound. It's called zincicide, and that has demonstrated phenomenal efficacy against the pathogen and the insect itself as well, both. And so it's undergoing tests, and we hope that will be, you know, undergoing field tests and deployed here in the near future. A second example is the development of tools—in—pesticidal tools, in quotes, against the genetic mechanisms of the insect itself, and it's called RNAi. You know, you're interfering with the heritability process, and that has some really outstanding possibilities as well. So those are a couple of examples of things that are happening that we believe will, in the longer term, provide us that sort of a return on investment.
Not having any citrus in my district in Oklahoma, until we got into this process a few years ago, I didn't appreciate potentially how devastating an issue could be and literally could bring an industry entirely to an end in this country. So it got the attention of the committee, and we worked very diligently on it. One last question, though. The industry has prioritized funding projects related to trees genetically engineered to resist the citrus screening, and some observers have indicated that funding was denied because of a concern related to how the consumers might potentially accept the final result. Why has your agency not funded this project?
So the answer is actually yes and no. Funding is being provided for looking at genetic engineering approaches to deal with this devastating pest, as you said. I mean, over 75% of the Florida citrus industry has now been impacted, and it's found in California and Texas as well. So we are providing funding for genetic engineering. But again, it's peers that come together that are providing the input in reviewing these projects as well. And in fact, the Agricultural Research Service has some really cool stuff that's going on in regards to genetic engineering, and I'm going to let Dr. Siobhan—
Please.
Yeah, so I will tell you that we are undergoing the research on a genetically engineered tree there in Fort Pierce, Florida. And in 2014, we released seven new rootstocks that are tolerant to HLB, and we are working cooperatively with the state of Florida, University of Florida, and we're running field trials right now, and we're seeing some excellent results. We've shown that other therapies, like thermal therapy, is important to put some of the trees into remission, but the key is early detection. And early detection is where we can have our best options for saving—the trees, and believe it or not, the dogs have been very important in helping us be able to detect the disease early enough to come in with some sort of antimicrobial or thermal treatment.
Thank you both. You go back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and recognize myself, kind of a two-part question, and one is, we had earlier a question, the Forest Service and others, about use of—Mrs. Jacobs Young, your agency studies on bighorn sheep and domestic sheep and the impact that's having, the great work you're doing trying to figure out what's happening, and yet it doesn't appear the agency uses that information in making some of the decisions. And then broadly, how do we do a better job? You know, NASA bragged on Teflon as a way to say that here's how these research dollars, in addition to putting them out on the moon, helped everyday Americans do better. So how can we do a better job, all of us, in communicating the successes that you're having and the actual, you know, pocketbook, day-to-day impact on consumers, as an example, and then your own sister agencies or other agencies within the government taking advantage of the science that you're coming up with and the answers you're coming up with, and then that factors into the other policymaking things that go on others. So kind of a broad-based question, and anybody who wants to weigh in, I'd appreciate it.
So can I start with just the Forest Service question in terms of the grazing allotments? And in DeBois, Idaho, we are still allowed access to the allotments in—for the Forest Service allotments for our grazing. And so we have been working with them. They're doing an environmental assessment for us, and so we are in constant communication with the Forest Service. And so, we are in constant communication with the Forest Service. We do have some new research findings. And when I saw your question earlier today, I reached out to my scientists to ensure that we touch base with the Forest Service on our new findings in terms of this interaction between the bighorn and the domestic sheep and in terms of immune systems and deficits in immune systems. And so, there are some research findings that we want to make sure that we keep on the front, you know, the front burner for our service agencies. But we've been working with NOAA and NASA around climate change and soil moisture and global measurements to help us make better decisions. And you're right, we don't do a great job telling the stories of the impacts that we've had. You know, we think about cotton, just the outcome of some of the work we've done in cotton, permanent press cotton, you know, for those of us who travel a lot are very thankful for that discovery. You know, that originated out of agriculture. The avian influenza, you know, pandemic is what I like to call it. You know, it could have been much worse had it not been for science being able to come in and be able to diagnose the situation, being able to help mitigate the situation. In fact, now that we've seen another case of it, we've been quickly able to isolate it, and we don't have what we experienced in the past. And so, you're right, we need to do a better job of really telling people the impact that science has on just their everyday way of life, you know? So I'm going to let my undersecretary have it.
If I let her and then I'll respond as well.
I think each agency has a different approach, kind of taken from the fact that they're all quite different in their missions and their constituencies. But on the broader level, we're blogging, we're tweeting, we're putting out podcasts from ERS and the other agencies. We're using the new media. And at the same time, we're continuing to put out into the scientific literature, which is, you know, the main way that we have communicating, literally tens of thousands of peer-reviewed scientific articles that are the result of the research investment in the intramural agencies and in the university scientists and students that are funded by NIFA. And lastly, we have the enormous advantage of having the partnership with Cooperative Extension and the land-grant universities that is a way of providing the research-based solutions directly to the people. So that partnership is very strong and is one key way that we continue to get the science-based solutions out to the users.
I might pick up on Dr. Watecki's response here. Indeed, you know, Extension, as you know, is in every one of our 4,143 counties, boroughs, and parishes in America. And there's a way to get knowledge and information in there. And, you know, all the tweets and all the Facebook postings, all the social media and things like that, really is part of this overall approach to conveying what's happening on the ground. As Siobhan just said, there are impactful things that are happening. You know, if you look at wheat production in America, projects that have been funded by NIFA have resulted, if you look at America, about 15% of the wheat acreage is based on the varieties developed by funding that we provided across multiple universities. That translates into about $1.8 billion of added income to farmers. And that translates into about 15,000 jobs as well on the ground. And so, what we're doing is working through multiple media to get that information out. And I like to say that we need to remove the shroud of secrecy that surrounds this amazing enterprise that we have in the world of agriculture.
One of the things we do at ERS is to measure the impact of technologies on farmers, consumers, and U.S. agriculture as a whole. And we annually produce measures of agricultural productivity, which show on average about 3% growth. And this is all from technology and better management by farmers. It's not from added inputs. So this allows us to show how land resources have been saved, how there are fewer chemicals being added because of new technologies. And that's something we continue to invest in and had a scientific review of the methods to make sure that the public has confidence in what we're finding. We also do sector studies. We published a report on structural change in the dairy industry a few weeks ago, which shows, and I can't remember the time period, over recent years, that there has been a 19% decrease in the average cost of production in the dairy industry. So this leads to lower consumer prices and benefits all Americans. And we plan to continue to invest in these studies, and they rely heavily on the information we get from our sister agencies, ARS and NIFON Science, and the data and statistics from NAS. So it really is an integrated effort to do this.
Well, I, we'll do our second round here in a second. I appreciate that. But we all need to do a better job of trumpeting your successes in a tangible way that in 2018 will help us get another farm bill done. Because, a little self-serving here, but I'm going to, we're going to need all the help we can get to get that done. And the more consumers can understand where their food comes from and how it gets there and the successes that are there, which always translates into less, the food costs that they're enjoying. And they don't understand all the great work that you do, they don't understand how that translates through the Extension Service that Dr. Ramaswamy talked about. All of that just happens seamlessly, and we do it really, really well. But we don't brag on it enough. And you've got a great story to brag on. There's nothing wrong with helping consumers understand that whether it's permanent press close or whatever it might be, that that's coming about as a great work that, in partnership between your agencies, your sister agencies, as well as production agriculture and all the, you know, the kind of reciprocal folks that are doing research and everything else that's going on. You've got a terrific story to tell. We just, all of us need to do a better job telling it, and by 2018, we need to really do a good job. Doctor Ramaswamy?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, one of the things that I've been pushing, the grantees, the people that we give the money, to make sure that they make the connection between the public investments and the public good that's derived as well. They do a lousy job of making that connection. Isn't the federal government, the state government, and the local governments are also investing in these things? They got to remember to make sure that they're making that connection as well. In the press releases that they do, the radio and television interviews they do, the tweets that they do as well, that we, once we start making that, the public gets it as well.
Amen, I agree. Who wants the second round?
What?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Dr. Benetcheck, five minutes.
I just didn't have a first round, so I just wanted to make sure that I got my five minutes in before you started again. That's okay. I always want to ask a question, a couple of brief questions on the Economic Research Service. And apparently, there's people in the department that specialize in regions around the world and that are important for agricultural trade. And I just, what are the focus of that research?
We cover developments in international markets in two dimensions. One is through our contributions to USDA's World Ag Outlook Board and the monthly inter-agency commodity estimates. And ERS has experts who go to those meetings and with the Foreign Ag Service and our other USDA colleagues, assess the impacts of developments. And you see those in the numbers that come out every month. So we're behind those numbers with our international assessment. We put out every year a 10-year baseline in conjunction with the Office of the Chief Economist, but we have the models that do the heavy lifting in that. And that looks forward in terms of taking assumptions about macroeconomic developments, population growth, and puts together a set of forecasts that help industry and agriculture look forward. We also do special studies that's motivated by this work. And we identify these issues through our work with the World Ag Outlook Board. Where are the big uncertainties? Where are the issues? We also consult regularly with stakeholders to bring in topics. And we are welcome, we welcome input from your staff on issues you think is important. Recent examples include work we did last year on China's cotton policies and the impacts of their accumulation of stocks on global markets and U.S. impacts for the U.S. We looked at potential implications of trade with Cuba. As Undersecretary Watecki mentioned, we've published work on the bigger trade agreements, on TPP implications and TTIP. So I think this two-pronged approach is really necessary because the U.S. exports between 20 and 30% of our production, depending on how you measure it. So we're highly integrated and dependent on more.
Thank you. Appreciate that answer. I just want to ask Dr. Ramaswamy a question that I'm hoping to touch on at the next panel too, but we have this bovine TB issue in Michigan. I know you worked at Michigan State at one point, and I know that they're implementing a kind of a new program for dealing with these infected herds. But since you're talking about research, I mean, I talked to these farmers that were involved, and they've been apparently doing everything that they're supposed to do to prevent this TB. And they're still getting the TB, you know, they still get the TB. So I know it's been around for a long time, but what is the, can you tell me how, you know, the vectors? I mean, people think it's just wild animals and everything. Can you go into that a little bit?
I'm actually going to defer to Dr. Jacob's young, because the Agricultural Research Service actually has significant work going on in that area.
Well, good. Tell me about it.
Absolutely. So, you know, we've determined that it's being transmitted by wild deer to the cattle. And so, we've identified the transmission mechanism. And we've actually worked to develop an assay to help us detect infected animals. And so, this assay, in addition to the human skin test for TB, we've been able to enhance our ability to determine if the deer are in fact, and our cows are in fact, infected. Now, in terms of vaccines, we're actually using a human TB vaccine to start with. And so, we're going to be developing a more robust animal vaccine from that point. But we're using a human vaccine to actually vaccinate the wild deer and not the cattle. So we're working from the point of, we are.
How are you going to get a hold of a wild deer vaccinated?
Orally. I have not personally been involved in, you know.
Let me tell you, that didn't seem like an easy thing to do.
Very carefully is what my colleagues say. But so, we are working from, we are working with the vector. And so, we'd be happy to follow up with you with some.
Well, I would appreciate that, because I've had a couple of visits to farms within the last year.
Yes.
That have had, you know, pretty agonizing.
Oh, yeah.
Situations occur. And I understand it's not only in Michigan, but I think Texas also has this problem too. So it would be good to work with you, because I, these problems are, seem like they're ongoing.
They are. And soon as we solve one issue, there's something else. But this is an example of where human science and animal science have to be in communication, right? Because it's, so we've learned a lot from human TB in order to be able to manage this.
Thank you.
Dan, since I skipped you, would you like to start the second round? Dan, Benetcheck, since I skipped you, would you like to start the second round?
No, that's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. I'll wait, I'll wait my turn.
Your server pout, is that what you're going to do, your server pout?
Well, no, I'm good with these folks. I'm, I will hopefully start the next time.
Does, who would like a second round with this panel? G.T., five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Once again, thanks. And I'm not really looking for an answer on this now, but it has to do with research. When we did the farm bill, we had what I would call milk wars in terms of the dairy program of what we were going to do. And we wound up doing something I supported, the margin insurance. And so, I'm assuming, I guess you never assume, but I'm hoping that that's something that we'll be looking at, look at the effectiveness of that. Because we need to know how effective, we need to know how we've done, whether it's good or bad news. And that's one in particular because of how our dairy farmers struggle. So I don't, it's pretty early, so I don't know if there's any preliminary data on the outcome of that, or is that something you're tracking?
So yes and yes. So I mentioned the report we published a couple of weeks ago, looking at structural changes in the dairy industry. That concludes with a preliminary look on the MPP program.
Okay.
And we have research underway, doing just what you asked for. And we expect to have results coming out over the next couple of years and in time for people to use and thinking about the next farm bill.
Excellent. And I'd love to look at it just as kind of a cross-section of how well we're doing.
Yep.
You know, the state of, I appreciate it. You know, I really appreciate the land-grant universities were mentioned. I believe blue and white, I'm a Penn Stater, I'm a product of Penn State. And I love our Extension Agent Services that we have, 67 counties in Pennsylvania. Some of those are closing right now, and it's not our fault, it's not your fault. It's, we've got a governor, and it's our number one industry in Pennsylvania, but we just have a governor that's holding that hostage. And these are federal dollars that we have appropriated back in the end of June last year. And yet, and he just refuses to release those. A question I have, and I don't know whether you know the legal question, I don't believe he has, because it's federally appropriated and it's not, most of it's not matched by state dollars, I don't think there's a, he has a legal leg to stand on for withholding that funding, which is hurting our people, hard-working men and women that are working today that benefit from that technical expertise, you know, in so many different ways. And they're actually looking to discontinue our 4H and FFA programs. That's our next generation of farmers. And so, I don't know if you have any insight into whether that money can legally be held up and held hostage, but I'd just love to get your opinion on it.
Yeah. Congressman Thompson, yes, sir. In fact, the folks from Penn State, the president and.
Dr. Barron, good guy.
Yes, sir. Barron and Rick Roush, the dean as well, they've been in touch with us over the last several months, as a matter of fact, since last summer, when this whole thing got started. And indeed, I've also heard from various farm groups and others within the state of Pennsylvania as well about the significant challenges. Just last week, I was talking to the folks that do mushrooms in that state. Again, they were asking me about this situation. And yes, there is a legal requirement on the match, that, you know, for every dollar that we provide, there's got to be a state dollar on it. And as I understand it, within the legislature and between the governor and the legislature, there's some movement on coming to some sort of an agreement. And we're waiting to see how that, you know, comes about. But we're going to be following up on that as well in regards to making sure that the match is being met by the state.
Yeah. I tell you, passed the House and the Senate, I believe, yesterday, but the governor threatened to, once again, veto it. He's got a line item veto. Don't understand it. You'll back.
Anyone else want to, Dan, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I want to thank you for the work you guys have all done on citrus screening in our status. You know, we went from about 400 to 450 million boxes down to under 100 million boxes, and it's just devastating in Florida without oranges is like wall without mark, you know, they just kind of go hand in hand. And the research you're doing on that, especially with the GMOs and the bactericides that you had mentioned, if you catch it early, those are great. But if we can't market, it's for naught. And that's what we saw in Florida with the ring spot virus on the papayas, that the GMOs were created at the University of Florida IFIS approximately 12 years ago. The EPA approved them, the FDA, the USDA, but it's just now coming to where it's coming to market. Is there a way to enhance that marketing aspect of that as you're doing the research and start letting people on a public education level know with, maybe it's documentaries, how you produce this product and the outcome of that? What are your thoughts on that?
I'll take a shot at it, and then, you know, I think Dr. Bowman there, from an economist's perspective, might be able to provide some insights as well. So, yes, indeed. I mean, in America, we have a situation where there's the, in quotes, in the marketplace, there's a significant reluctance to, you know, consume, in quotes, genetically modified crops and papayas and things like that. Never mind all the science points to the fact that they are, there's nothing wrong, there's no difference between a GM crop and a non-GM crop. And to your point, there, IFIS, the Institute of Food and Agriculture at University of Florida, is indeed, you know, trying to figure out how to change the mindset of the consumer and the public. And so, we're in a situation where we're trying to, you know, respond, react to the situation that we've got. And so, a number of land-grant universities that we've provided funding to are undertaking research on how to get consumer behavior to change as well, going back to the question that the chairman asked as well about the impacts and things like that. So we're working with those, with IFIS and other institutions to figure out the best path forward on enhancing knowledge in the consumer, and therefore, that they're able to go ahead and purchase and consume. Lastly, the genetic modification that's going on is now gone. that's going on is now gone beyond the transfer of genes from unrelated species to manipulating the genetics inside of the same organism itself.
Right.
And I think there's going to be, we have to do a really better job of explaining to the consumer that that sort of changes that are taking place is not unlike the selection and breeding that we've done over the millennia as humanity.
When you say we, are you talking about the USDA? And do you have a marketing campaign or budgeted for a marketing campaign to utilize the research at your funding so that the public does know about this, so we dispel a lot of the misinformation out there?
We do not have something like what you've just described for the research and education agencies.
Okay.
The primary way that we have for communicating with the public would be through NIFA programs, cooperative extension, which has, over the years, had good science-based information about genetic engineering, its applications in agriculture, and what this means. NIFA has programs for curriculum development, grants programs that Dr. Ramaswamy administers that also can be used for development of curriculum for high schools as well as at the university and the graduate level. So that's the primary way by which we would be communicating about this science, what it means for the consumer, what it means for safety.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't have authorization or marketing--
Would you need authorization from us, or is that something you can do internally? Because if you look at like Dr. Borlog with genetically-modified wheat back in the 60s that accounted for a billion people being saved, you know, and India gave them, you know, they've got a statue of them over there. Those kind of documentaries, I don't know if it's best through you or through the big farm, ag farm companies, or a correlation between you two, to get that word out there, because there is just so much misinformation and confusion on that. And we need to promote the benefits of these products. If we're, and we're growing to a 9 billion people on this planet, we need to be able to utilize these products. I yield back. Thank you.
Chairman, you'll back. Anybody else would like another round comments from the, for this particular panel? Well, Dr. Watecki, I mean, Mr. Watecki and the rest of the panel, thank you all very much. Your agencies do great work. You typically labor in anonymity for the most part, and we thank you for all of the work you do. And as we said, all of us, including yourselves, these do a better job of bragging on your successes. The way we can best do that, I think, is convert what you do into the pocketbook impacts on consumers and that kind of thing. If there's a way we could start talking better about that, because they, as we all say often, enjoy the cheapest, our most affordable food supply in the world, and it's driven by a lot of moving parts, including what you and your agencies do, and the men and women who get up every day and try to make this world a better place to live in. So thank you for what you do. We appreciate that. We'll take a brief 15-minute break while we get the other panels here. We're a little early, but I want to thank you all very much for the preparation done. And I thank your backbenchers back there for all the questions they prepared you to answer that we didn't ask. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate your support.
All right, let's go ahead and go ahead and start back up. It's now my pleasure to welcome our fourth panel to the, to the witness table today, led by the Honorable Ed Avalos, who's the Undersecretary for Marketing Regulatory Programs of USDA. Today, Mr. Avalos is accompanied by Elor Stamer, who's the Acting Administrator for Agriculture Marketing Service, Kevin Shea, the Administrator for Animal/Plant Health Inspection Services, and Larry Mitchell, he's Administrator for Grain Inspection Packers and Stockyard Administration, a proud Charlton State grad. And I understand a recent, they bragged on you at the Charlton Academic Forum this past fall as being a, well, they're better graduates. So glad you're here with us this morning, Mr. Mitchell. With that, Mr. Avalos, five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of this committee, I am pleased to have an opportunity to discuss activities of USDA Market Regulatory Programs missionary, including IFIS, GIPS, and AMS. American agriculture directly and indirectly supports over 16 million jobs. At USDA, we have some very dedicated, very hardworking, and talented people. I applaud their work that they do for farmers, ranchers, and our rural communities. The MRP agencies must cultivate strong relationships and partnerships with industry groups, state agencies, sister federal agencies, and foreign governments. Expanding and maintaining agricultural trade is a priority for the administration, and so important to our farmers, our ranchers, our shippers, our packers, our feeders, and so many, many, many more stakeholders. MRP missionary plays a vital role in developing and facilitating exports of livestock, meat, poultry, and agricultural products throughout the world. IFIS addresses animal and plant health issues that many times are used to restrict trade. GIPS inspects and certifies almost all grain that is exported. AMS issues export certificates to verify and certify that products meet specific export requirements for countries around the world. So much of the market access and market share that we enjoy today is due to the work of this missionary. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with you today. This is my last year as Undersecretary. After my service here in DC, I plan to return home to New Mexico, to Las Cruces, to the Mausia Valley. It's been an honor to serve our nation's farmers and ranchers in our many, many rural communities. I enjoyed working with the committee, Mr. Chairman, and I thank all of you for your hard work in supporting and protecting American agriculture. So now my team and I are ready to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Ed. Appreciate that and appreciate your service and all those years. Let's, again, we'll reverse the order, and Mr. Lamoffa would be first.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Avalos for, Secretary, for your appearance here today and your congratulations on your decision to go back to beautiful New Mexico where living's good. So I hope you've enjoyed your time and your service in a difficult place. But I'll just hone in on it here with a major issue that affects a lot in California as well as consumers across the country. Earlier this year, CBS News had a 60-minute report about the-- Earlier this year, CBS News had a 60-minute report about the widespread, just the pervasiveness of olive oil and the fraud that is found within olive oil and its labeling, its designation, whether it's extra virgin or even actually 100% oil in those containers. Experts say the U.S. annual imports of tainted and adulterated and fraudulent olive oil is significantly high, including blending small quantities of extra virgin oil with large quantities of either low old quality oil or other types such as sunflower and getting away with a label of extra virgin for all of that in order to keep the price up for extra virgin oil values. Of course, it's a major issue for customers who, so many of them don't even know what really good oil is like, and it's become a pretty strong industry in California now with the wonderful oils that are being produced there under an extra virgin label. So obviously with this mislabeling or inaccurate labeling, it hurts our domestic industry and producers and also consumers who might be overpaying for fraudulent products when they could be buying good product at maybe similar prices. California, again, produces about 99% of the olive oil that is produced in this country and represents a tiny, less than 1% of the total global consumption, so they need a little help, a little protection from USDA, who, my understanding is that they've expanded their quality monitoring program to include extra virgin olive oil, but there are still no federal requirement or standard. So as you're aware, the Managers Amendment in the Farm Bill directed USDA, among other agencies, to work to remove obstacles that are preventing the domestic industry from reaching its potential. What do you see lately that USA has been doing to help achieve a solution to protect our domestic producers as well as consumers who would like to believe what it is on the label?
Congressman, I am familiar with the issue that you brought up, and I'm really glad you brought it up in this hearing because I've had growers from California come in to see me about this very issue, very concerned about the imports that come in and that are maybe misrepresented. So anyway, at USDA, you know, it's not all our issue, it's also an FDA issue, but we are continuing to have the conversation with the California growers. We've had discussion with them about a possible marketing order. So at this time, the discussions are ongoing and have nothing else to report as to progress made, but we will continue to work on this because I know how important it is to those folks in California.
Do you see a stronger enforcement mechanism over fraud on the oil that is imported under false pretense?
Congressman, to be honest with you, I don't know if we have that jurisdiction or not, but if there's anything we can do that's within our realm, we will.
All right, well, please keep my office and this committee abreast of how those conversations are going and what we can do to help ensure that olive oil is as it is labeled, you know? I mean, if people want choices, they want lower quality blends, that's fine, but they need to be able to see what's in there, and I think we all recognize that, so thank you.
We will, yes, sir.
And congratulations and enjoy New Mexico, sir.
Thank you.
Jimmy is back, Mr. Rousier for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to get some clarification and explore a little more this issue related to the pork trademark, and I think it's perhaps an understatement to say that there's been a little commotion, you know, about all this. So, you know, just last week, the pork industry voted unanimously in opposition to USDA's actions related to the pork trademark, and so I have several questions here and try to get at the bottom of this. Explain to me exactly who's conducting the review. Is it AMS?
Congressman, I'm going to ask my Administrator at AMS to address your questions because she's been working on this almost on a daily basis.
Thank you, Congressman. Do you want to ask all of your questions, and then I can respond, or do you want me to respond to each?
I'd like for you to respond to the first one first.
Sure. The, excuse me, the independent evaluation is being conducted by an external entity that was recommended to us. We did consult with the National Pork Board in selecting that independent evaluator, and they're going to be conducting the valuation of the trademarked phrase, and then they will supply that information to our office, at which point, information that has been provided by NPPC as well as by the Humane Society will be packaged up with the independent evaluation and sent on to the Secretary for Decision.
So who's paying for that review? Is that AMS?
The National Pork Board, sir.
Was the National Pork Board consulted in terms of seeking that outside consultant?
We did bring the recommendations to the National Pork Board and worked closely with them in determining which to select, yes.
Did they approve that outside consultant?
They were ultimately responsible for the selection of the independent evaluator.
So did they vote on that?
I don't know, sir.
What authority would the Pork Board have to end the review?
I know that we have some more detailed information coming to you on that, but I do not believe that they have authority to end the review. The case is between the Humane Society of the United States and independent pork producers brought against USDA for our determination to allow the sale of the trademarked phrase to go forward. So under our jurisdiction to oversee financial transactions by the Board, the claim that was brought by the Humane Society was that we erred in our allowing that sale to go forward. So the industry is not a party to the suit, and therefore, they don't have standing, but USDA has been, you know, we agreed to have the independent evaluation conducted. We sought information from NPPC and from HSUS, and we will come out with the recommendation. The litigation has been stayed pending that independent evaluation.
Is the contract legal or not legal?
Which contract are you?
The contract between the two entities in terms of transferal of the trademark.
Well, I believe that's the subject of the suit that was brought, so that's pending litigation.
So they're alleging that it is not legal?
We can certainly get you details on the specific allegations, but they alleged that we should not have approved the sale and that the value of the trademark was, that it was overvalued, and so that's why we have agreed to conduct this independent evaluation that will provide both USDA and the industry with a current day value for that trademarked phrase.
So who's going to make the decision whether to breach the contract or maintain the contract? Will that be AMS or will that be the Pork Board?
So the decision, once we get the independent evaluation back, we will be issuing a decision that will come through the Office of the Secretary, and that decision will be, and we have committed to issuing that by May 2nd, and that's going to be informed by our independent judgment and the evaluation and the submissions that we receive from the industry and from HSUS. The litigation itself has been stayed until we come out with that recommendation, so depending on what that recommendation says, we'll see what happens with the litigation process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jimmy is back, Mr. Yoho, five minutes.
Yep. I've been following that case, and it just, to me, it's crazy. If I were to buy a house from Mr. Rousier and we agree on a price, and I agree with it and I pay it, and then a third party comes along and says, "You paid too much for that," and then they get a lawsuit that goes into that, it just seems like it's meddling in an affair that they have no standing in. And do you see this as a frivolous lawsuit that shouldn't even be litigated?
Well, sir, the lawsuit was brought against USDA related to our authority and our responsibility under the law to approve financial transactions of the National Pork Board, and so the suit alleges that we erred in our approval of that financial transaction. So that is our responsibility, and I believe that after we complete the independent evaluation, we will be in a good position to be able to provide all parties with information on the current value of that trade.
Any idea what the cost of that litigation is in all this before you get a settlement that it's costing USDA?
I do not know that, sir.
In the millions?
I couldn't say, sir.
Okay. Let's move on to something else that is less, I guess is probably not less controversial, it's biotech labeling. You know, we passed that bill here in the House, went over to the Senate, and the way I understand, the Senate's going to send it back to us. Correct me if I'm wrong, with the biotech labeling bill that we sent over there, it would be like setting standards, kind of like they set for gallons of gas or pounds weights for doing commerce. Is that pretty much what we sent and decided here, a certain standard at the federal level that would allow each state to designate voluntarily how they wanted to label products? Mr. Secretary Avalos?
Congressman, first, I just want to acknowledge that the House and the Senate have put considerable amount of effort into this topic.
We sure did.
I know, and I know it's a very, very important issue, and at USDA, in this missionary area, we're still ready to continue to provide any technical support you might need. But to try to answer your question, I'm going to answer it with a statement that Secretary Vilsack has said many, many times. He's made it very clear that a patchwork of rules is not functional and would not work. So it's an important issue that we hope Congress will continue to address.
Well, again, and we were talking about this in the last committee hearing we had just right before you guys, about the marketing strategy, and I think I made Mr. Secretary Vilsack's blood pressure go up last time he was here, not intentionally, but we do all this money in research that we fund through the land grants, and we come up with a product, and then it seems like it gets stuck in the marketing chain, and there's a lot of misinformation out there, and we were talking about, is there a marketing program or is there authorization for a marketing program that we can tell how a GMO is created and how it goes to market and show the pure research behind it to answer these questions so that we can utilize the research that we've done, and USDA does a phenomenal job on this, but with like the GMO, when we passed this bill here, we were getting hammered in our districts at, "How dare you pass something like this?" And we were trying to set a standard on a federal level so that each state could voluntarily set, you know, decide what to label a GMO. And do we have a program that you're aware of, or do you need authorization to do a different marketing program? I don't want to say you're not doing a marketing program, but a different marketing program.
Congressman, I might ask our Administrator, Eleror, to respond.
Thank you, Congressman. So without express authority from Congress, AMS cannot set a standard for GMO or non-GMO labels. We can, however, through our process verified program, use government auditors to assure that a company is meeting its own standard. We have done that for one company for a non-GMO claim, and so the way that that program works is the company develops its own standard, we post that to the website so it's transparent, and then we have auditors to ensure that that standard is adhered to.
All right, I appreciate that. And before I go, I just wanted to give a shout out to Administrator Shea for all the help you've given us on the past act and, you know, the clarification and the guidance you've given us, and I thank you. I yield back.
Jimmy yields back, Dr. Bineckeck, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shea, I have a question that I kind of brought up in the last panel, and I appreciate you all being here today, but my district has an issue with bovine TB. Some of the producers have had positive herds this year, and their experience has been difficult. There was, the endemone fund was overwhelmed with this avian flu thing, and apparently there's a new way of dealing with TB so that states are going to be more involved with this, and I'm happy that states are more involved, but I just have a few questions about it. I think there's a concern among the farmers that there's not going to be a clear way of negotiating the bureaucracy with states, the feds, you know what I mean, to get the help they need when they have to depopulate. Can you kind of go into that a little bit?
Mr. Congressman, we are looking at new rules for tuberculosis and brucellosis as well to kind of bring the program more to modern times, and one of the things we want to do is make sure that we are not overpenalizing states when they do have a few positive herds. In terms of your state in Michigan, in the case that happened last year, let me just say right up front, I do apologize and I regret that it took too long to get the depopulation funding back to that owner. As you mentioned, we simply were overwhelmed last year with too many tuberculosis herds between Texas and Michigan, and it took us some time to find all the money we needed, and then there was some negotiation about the actual price, but we will do better the next time. We hope there aren't a lot of next times, but we will certainly do better, and I think we've got a good relationship with the state. As you know, in Michigan, we have a specific problem with TB and wildlife, and particularly in that part of Michigan.
TB what?
TB and wildlife.
Right, 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 yeah. Well, that was the question I had for the last panel, is how are they going to fix that? And talking to, I'm not sure of every case, but I know I talked to one farm in particular where they weren't sure. I mean, I think their dairy was separate from the wildlife, where they kept them inside, and they weren't sure of the vector, you know what I mean? Making sure of the vector is kind of important for solving the problem, and if it's the wildlife, great, but I'm not sure what the proof is, if they've had the same exact strain of TB that was found in the, you know, I mean, I don't know exactly the proof situation, but I've had two separate herds now in my district, you know, have to be depopulated, and it's pretty traumatic for the whole family, the whole area, everybody gets nervous, you know what I mean? They don't know what the situation is, so I just want the process to be smooth and, you know, really worked on to solve this problem. Please give me your comments for the time I have left.
Well, we'll certainly do everything we can to make that process smoother going forward. We will work very closely with any affected herds to reach a common agreement on the value of a herd before we depopulate it, so it doesn't stretch out too long. But you're right, as long as the diseases in wildlife, there is a problem. And of course, it doesn't necessarily have to be direct contact between the wildlife and those dairy cows for them to get infected. Someone or something could come in contact with the deer and spread it into the dairy farm, just as we saw even influenza spread by things and people, even though initially it came in through wildlife.
Right, okay. Well, I appreciate your interest in this because, you know, it's pretty dramatic when it happens and a lot of angst over the whole situation. I just want the new process, the new rules, to make sure that, you know, that everything works smoothly because there's a little bit of fear about how that's going to work in the future, so I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Jimmy yields back, Mr. Kelly, five minutes.
I'm going to start, and I think I'm going to ask the Acting Administrator here, is it Starner? I can't see from here, my eyes are not what they used to be.
Starmer.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I'm going back to Congressman Yoho from Florida about the GMOs. Each state can determine what a GMO is, a genetically modified organism. I think, however, it gets a bad rap, and by the use of that name, and if each state can determine the labeling on that, how far back do we go? Do we say, I know my grandfather was a farmer, and he would have Angus cows, and he would have Hereford cows, and if he bred those together, that would be a genetically modified organism, right? Because you have two different subspecies, which now, and I think we just called them whiteface where I was from, but you modified that cow. You go back to horses, you have recreational canines that people have that are different breeds that have been like a labradoodle or those type of names. All those All those things are grafting of an orange plant with some root system which will more naturally hold up and stay, keep the root system there that can grow longer and sustain the growth. Vegetables, over time, I mean, so how far back do we allow? I think it is your duty at some point, number one, to market what a GMO is or to name it something that applies. And number two is, is to say, how far back? Because I doubt that there are very many original species left from when this world was created. And so anytime that we modify anything across pollinization, do you understand what I'm saying? There's a lot of things that a state can say, you know, I don't want a cow from Mississippi. So I know that in the past, they have bred Herefords and Anguses together, and that is a GMO, so we're not going to take any beef from Mississippi. Or they bred Longhorns from Texas with some other breed of cattle, so that is a GMO, and so we're no longer going to take beef from the state of Texas. I think we have to be very careful, and I think that is part of our marketing and your duty to define what a genetically modified organism is rather than just using the term where it can apply in states. Can you comment to that, please?
Sure, thank you, Congressman. As I did mention earlier, without statutory authority provided by Congress, we can't define GMO or non-GMO through a standard. But if Congress provides us with that authority, as they did, for example, with the National Organic Program to define what organic means, then we would engage in the rulemaking process to define that term, and that would go through public comment. Then it would fall on FDA and FSIS to determine truth in labeling as to how those products were labeled to ensure that they conform to the standard. So there's a number of different players engaged in this, but with statutory authority provided by Congress, we would develop a standard through the rulemaking process.
I understand that, but on a very basic level, would you not agree that there are certain things, can we, going back to, I don't know that we have any pure species anymore in this world, anywhere in this world in any type of thing, because nature does that in and of itself. And I think there's a huge perception out there that we have scientists that, for the most part, and all these things that are being called GMO, are doing these things outside of the realm of natural science, that they don't understand it's the same things that we did in the 1930s and the 40s and the 50s and the 1880s. And is there any way or anything you can do, even if it's not defining what a GMO is, to say what is not a GMO? Or is there any timeframe which you can do? Because otherwise, I do think if a state wanted to, they could actually not allow anything or any produce into their state, other than that, that they grow in their state.
At this point, we're limited to auditing companies' own standards through our process verified program, as I mentioned. With statutory authority, we could define the term, and I think you've touched on the fact that that would be a very complicated process that would obviously require, and I'm sure elicit, a lot of public comment. At this point, though, it's FDA and FSIS that are looking at the truth in labeling question when they look at claims on the labels.
And just very briefly, how do you ensure that MRP is coordinated appropriately with other federal agencies such as FDA and EPA?
On the GMO issue specifically?
On any issue.
Do you want to speak to that, sir?
At USDA, in this mission area, whether it be AFIS or AMS, we routinely regularly coordinate with their sister federal agencies like FDA, EPA, FSIS within USDA. This is ongoing and is part of our responsibility because our work overlaps and complements each other.
Thank you. Now you're back, Mr. Chairman.
Jimmy yields back. Mr. Thompson, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Under Secretary Avalos, congratulations on your upcoming retirement. And wanted to, wanted to follow through on the biotech labeling issue as well. From the standpoint of, the FDA has stated that the only reason a label would be mandated is if a new variety of, and I think the language they use materially different, is materially different from a conventional counterpart. Do all applications of genetic engineering technology result in material differences in new plant varieties which would necessitate a government mandated warning label?
Congressman, I don't have an answer for you, but I'm going to ask, maybe Kevin Shay can help me out a little bit.
Okay, sure.
Congressman, of course, we in, we in AFIS regulate plant biotechnology.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about.
And I think you're getting a good point here. Biotechnology has evolved quite a bit over the last 30 years, which makes our current regulatory scheme a little archaic, frankly. So we are working with CDC and EPA, who are our partners, I'm sorry, FDA and EPA, who are our partners in the consolidated framework, to make some changes. And we recently published a notice of intent to do environmental impact statement that would make some changes. But to your very specific question, certainly, there are many applications of biotechnology now that don't turn something from one species into another. And I think maybe that some of the questioning here gets to that point.
And that, my point, yeah, that you've got where I'm zeroing out at, and it's the language where it says that it should only be mandated if it's a new variety materially different from a conventional counterpart.
That's right, and I think that often, there is not a material difference anymore.
You know, and if, and I agree with you. And if not, then, you know, and why would USDA propose a government mandated warning label on all new plant varieties derived from the, through biotechnology or genetic engineering or whatever you want to call it?
Well, Mr. Congressman, if I could say, I don't think that anyone USDA has any intention of proposing a mandatory label of any kind. In fact, our role in regulating biotechnology is simply to say whether or not a new event, as they called in that world, would indeed cause any plant pest or disease. And once we pass that threshold, we're finished. We don't think there's any need to have a label to point to that.
Well, I would agree with you, but your boss's boss actually has come out with a statement in favor of a mandate, mandated labeling program. And so maybe it's a miscommunications, I hope it is, because I agree with your perspective and not what he has released, Secretary Vilsack has commented on and released. So maybe that's something we could go back and get our clarification on. Hopefully, there's some miscommunication at a higher level, because I certainly agree with your perspective on that.
Well, maybe I'm parsing words a little bit here. You use the term warning label. I don't think that Secretary Vilsack has ever used the term warning for a label. There is some, obviously, some good faith dispute about whether or not there should be a label for consumer awareness purposes. But I don't think that's the same as a warning.
Mandatory labels, what other purpose would they be for? I mean, it's a warning label. So I think that's just something more, if you could go back and get some clarification, I would appreciate it. Because like I said, I actually respect and agree with your perspective on that. Administrator Starmer, in the biotech labeling area, is participation in the National Organic Program voluntary?
Absolutely.
All right. Do food producers and processors use the National Organic Program certification to distinguish your product in the marketplace and only take advantage of those marketing opportunities?
They do, certainly. We have a number of entities from the farm to the processor that use the organic seal and are certified to be in compliance with the standard.
Great. I mean, I would love to have your perspective on this because we get into, we just dealt with the country of origin labeling, which a lot of people were just confused across the country and thought it was a safety issue when coal was really a marketing issue. And we had to take some measures, obviously, after the, we were found out of compliance by the World Trade Organization a couple of times. Is the organic labeling a safety program or is it a marketing program?
It's a marketing program, sir, and it is used to verify compliance with the standard, with a set of practices that organic farmers and supply chain entities comply with.
Absolutely. And it's been great for some of my farmers. It's a niche, they're able to get a premium for folks who want to pay a little more for that brand, which is, which is good for farmers, so, and good for consumers who are looking for that. Thank you so much to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of weeks ago, maybe all of you or some of you testified in front of the Ag of Probst hearing and were asked about upcoming regulations under the Packers and Starkyards program. And at least the comment that was conveyed to us is that y'all were not aware of anything coming forward. And then yet, just this last week, Secretary Vilsack had mentioned that in a matter of weeks, there'll be a poultry regulations coming out. Did y'all get double-crossed or how was, how do you square the, how do you square the answers to the question within such a short timeframe?
Mr. Chairman, you know, this process on the GIPS rule, it's ongoing. And right now, at USDA internally, we don't have a commitment as to what these rules are going to look like. You know, I've been here since 2009, and I remember in 2010, we initiated this rulemaking on the GIPS rule. Then we were prohibited from working on certain parts of the GIPS rule. Then now that this prohibition has been lifted. So the secretary, he asked us to look at the GIPS rule, look at possible modifications, look at possible changes that we could do that would be appropriate, still taking into perspective the concerns that have been expressed in the past. So, Mr. Chairman, right now, we're in the preliminary stages, and we're going to do our job because we're required to do our job. And we're going to continue these internal discussions. We're going to look at all the comments that we have received in the past, and we're going to take a very well-balanced approach. And at the end of the day, we're going to come out with something that hopefully will be acceptable, and we're going to try to do our job correctly.
Okay, well, I guess what got communicated, or what was heard was that final rules would be more, much more quickly coming than that. What you've laid out is the right way to get at it, deliberately taking into consideration all the folks that are having conversations. But what was heard from the secretary's comments is that you're a lot further down the road than that and that you were prepared to release those rules, or that rule, much sooner and in much more complete fashion than what I hear you saying. You don't seem, what I just heard you say is the process isn't that far along yet, and you're still gathering it up, which is your, am I parsing things out here, Ed? Am I missing something?
Mr. Chairman, like I said, we're just working on internal discussions. We don't have work plans yet.
Okay.
And we are, you know, we will be working on these.
Yeah.
Now, it's important to note that once we get a work plan, then once we get a rule put together, we still have to go through OMB, and that's 90 days or longer. And so the earliest that I see having anything for the public to look at and comment on will be summer, early fall.
Okay, okay. So the answer then to the Ag of Probst guys, was it reflective of, did something happen after your testimony there and to where we are now that's different? Or were you in that same frame of just, we're processing this through and you didn't anticipate any final, anything coming into the public's deal? I'm just trying to get squared away here, Ed, I don't know what the deal was.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. We had just initiated internal discussions.
Okay.
So I couldn't really say, yes, we're going to go forward with this rule. Because at that time, when I testified, we weren't ready to go forward with the rule.
Okay, now I got you. I probably should have asked this the panel before. Is there any shred, any scintilla of evidence that biotechnology is endangering health in our food system? Anybody aware of any?
We're certainly not aware of any in AFIS, although I would say that that's really FDA's purview to determine whether any kind of biotechnology application will be a human health problem. But certainly, we're not aware of any, and we think that biotechnology has been good for everyone.
Does anybody at the panel see a way forward to feed an additional $3 billion people over the next 35 years with the same landmass we've got in place under production without using sound science?
I think the secretary has been pretty consistent in saying that we need all kinds of agriculture, conventional, organic, and biotech going forward.
Got you, all right. Anybody else want a second round? Mr. Rousen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I want to follow up on your GIPS line of questioning there for a second, because I'm a little unclear. Is this rule, will it be a proposed rule or will it be a final rule? Or do you know?
Congressman, this time, like I was mentioning earlier, we're just in the preliminary stages. We're just having internal discussions. So I can't tell you if we're going with a proposed rule, final rule, because we haven't got that far down the road yet.
Okay, I just, I just want a clarification on that. I would suggest it would be significantly unfair to issue a final rule if you're going to go that route.
But Congressman, I need to point out that this has been an ongoing discussion since 2010, and we have many, many, many comments that have been made from both sides, okay? We have a lot of comments. And in our internal discussions, we're going to look at those comments, and they will dictate how we move forward because that is part of the process, and that is what the stakeholders are asking for, and that's why they comment. And that's why the comment period on any rule, whether it be a proposed or final, is so critical.
Well, you seem to be tipping your hand that you're, you would lean towards the final rule. I think that would be a mistake. Would the changes be based on the 2008 Farm Bill language, given there was no mention of this, to my knowledge, in the 2014 Farm Bill?
Any modifications or changes that we do incorporate are going to take all comments that have come in into consideration. They're going to take in consideration concerns that were expressed by not only Congress but by other individuals. It's a, it's a very thorough internal evaluation.
Moving back to my original question as it related to the pork trademark. I'm a little confounded by this. So the National Pork Board has no standing, yet they're being required to pay for it. Does that seem fair to you?
Well, sir, the National Pork Board is a quasi-government entity, and the Supreme Court has ruled that their speech is government speech. So they are, you know, they administer the checkoff program. We are, under our legal authority, we regulate, oversee, and approve all of their funding expenditures. And as part of the process of determining the transfer of the trademarked phrase, they are paying for the independent evaluation so that we can have, find an outcome to this issue.
You're trying to have it both ways here. Now you're saying that it's a quasi-government, so why don't they have standing?
Well, we are, and, you know, in terms of, we will get you and the committee specific responses to these that will be informed by our lawyers, and I am not a lawyer. But we, you know, the Pork Board is represented by the Office of General Counsel at USDA. And so they are, they have representation, and OGC has been engaged in the ongoing litigation process as well as, as the current process now with the evaluation.
The fact of the matter is, they either have standing or they don't have standing. And if they don't have standing, they shouldn't have to pay for it. My gosh, this is not the Soviet Union, or I hope that we're not becoming the Soviet Union. This is why people are outraged all across this country. This is a microcosm of why the political, why the politics in this country is on fire right now. So anyhow, that's just my comment. Mr. Chairman, I yield back my time.
JT, any comments?
Well, thanks, this panel, for showing up today. I appreciate it. I know you probably didn't have a choice, but I appreciate, appreciate all the preparation you did in advance. Ed, congratulations on being able to move back to the Mesia Valley and get direct, immediate access to fresh chilies, that'll at least be at least two or three days fresher than what you get here. Mr. Shay, thank you for the hard work you and your team did over the last year-plus on your response to the high path avian influenza deal, and we're blessed to not have to repeat that. I watched and saw you put in place best practices and future-looking things to how to be better responsive and how to be more adaptive to the process. The folks in Indiana were swamped with folks last month when they looked like they might have a case, and they had, and so you guys and your team did, did good work, and I appreciate that. All of you represent good-hearted men and women, decent people who get up every day, as I've told every panel.
as I've told every panel, you just happen to be the ones I get to talk to. And so please express our appreciation to them for the work they do, day in and day out. We may disagree from time to time on some of the things that are going on, but please don't ever let that morph into something that says that we don't appreciate what you do, and that production agriculture is better as a result of your team and the folks that y'all lead. So thank you very much for being here. With that, under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material, supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member. This hearing of the Committee on Agriculture is adjourned. Thank you.